This particular text amendment. Yes, sir, please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Good evening Chairman, I'm Shawn Vincent, 1338 Glen Avenue. I am president of the, I'm sorry, I took Tammy's job. Chairman of the Columbia County Chamber for 2017 and had a few comments about the sign ordinance. And as you stated, sir, I think there's been a lot of discussions about this. We've seen some really fat folders at our board meetings and certainly want to appreciate everybody here for their input and, you know, really trying to find some common ground with our business owners. As you know, we represent more than a thousand businesses, a lot of those are located right here in Columbia County. We did distribute a letter this morning, I just wanted to give a copy to each of you. This letter was distributed to our membership this morning. Just had a couple of quick points and once again, I want to reiterate the fact that there has been a lot of progress made. As you stated earlier over here, that the majority of items we actually agree upon as far as size and scope of the actual square footage. There were a couple of comments we had in regard to the height of a couple of those, mainly in the first two columns and what was shared by this group. We certainly believe that the increase of the sign height and square footage from the original proposal and also the 25% increase in area roads are recommendation still stands on the overall increase in height and square footage. And we actually have based that on the International Sign Association, which is the industry standard. Next, we also believe that the covered pylon signs with a 36 inch base should be allowed as an alternative to the monument type signs for the following reasons. Essentially, it's an increase in visibility, it's, we certainly feel like it's more aesthetically pleasing when you look at some of those and ultimately, it's less costly in particular for business owners. And I know, I think we've shared this before, but this is actually what an actual sign would be like, for instance, with Queensborough Bank. So, this is what you see today and this is what it'd end up looking like. And once again, the overwhelming membership and the boards want an aesthetically pleasing environment here in the county. We certainly know that there's areas of our community, if you get on Washington Road where the signs have gotten a little crazy over the years. But we certainly want to make sure that we don't create a financial burden for our business owners and we also want to make sure that we have safety. A lot of these signs are located on the corners of some pretty busy roads at this time. And lastly, we appreciate the planning and development went from having zero signs allowed in businesses, then went to 30% and 50%. And we thank you for the 50% on the windows for the poster type signage. However, we still would recommend a higher percentage for the perforated vinyl, up to 100%, excluding the door. When we looked around, I mean, the ones that you primarily see this at is the recruiter's office, so National Guard, US Army Recruiter's Office. And actually, even though it's perforated, and I understand it covers up the windows, it actually in many cases looks better than even the posters, if you look at what they've done. And then, you know, certainly, we understand the safety issues I think had been brought up in the past about being able to visibly see within a business. But you can drive around the county and you can see certainly plenty of businesses that actually have tinted windows or have blinds, so they really don't have any access. And for the very reason that, you know, we had heard that, you know, sheriff, whoever's coming by wants to be able to see in the business, make sure nothing bad's going on or if there's a robbery or something like that. For the same reason, we had a lot of the smaller business owner said, hey, if I'm counting my money behind my register, I don't want somebody parked out front to be able to see that and then come in and take advantage of the opportunity. So, just in closing, just would like to say that we certainly appreciate the progress. We do listen to our membership, just like you listen to your constituents and, you know, we hope you'd reconsider on those areas with height. I think it's only about a three foot difference. And actually, even on one of them, we suggested a smaller square footage sign. So, out of the 18 areas that are listed, we're on track at well over three quarters of those. So with that, appreciate the time, Mr. Chairman and appreciate it members.
Thank you, appreciate it. Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Okay, is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Yes ma'am, please give us your name and home address.
I'm Bobby Stevens, I'm with AAA Sign Company. I manage our Savannah office, so my address is 26 Brightwater Drive, Thunderbolt, Georgia. I do have all of our permitting, so I'm very familiar with a lot of ordinances since we do business in North Carolina, South Carolina and Georgia. I want to commend you because I do know that the last two years in trying to redo a complete ordinance is next to impossible and you've listened, you have listened. I want to reiterate what Shawn said. The window covering, you know, if it's perforated, you can see through it and it really does provide a space for people that have a budget. A big thing is the monument cover. The picture that he showed you of Queensborough Bank, there is an $8,000 swing from pole cover three feet wide to pole cover 12 feet wide. That's a lot of money that doesn't do a thing for that bank, not a thing. You know, they had no copy except the address on the pole cover and I agree with that. It's so very necessary to have that address on there for 911 calls. One more thing that we'd like you to consider is the interstate overlay. Do not, I know there's 100% increase in height and 100% in square footage, but on a 15 foot sign, that's only a 30 foot sign. Somebody like Cracker Barrel that is an individual business, 35 feet's not going to be seen, you know, out on the interstate when somebody's going 65 miles an hour. So, we'd like you to consider doing something more for the interstate folks because they're out there and there's a lot of business up and down that interstate. So, we appreciate it, thank you so much, we do know the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we move on, just a point of clarification. Let's say somebody was near the interstate and they could have, get the 100% increase in height and they could go from 20 feet to 40 feet. Could they request a variance for a higher sign?
Sure.
Within that 1,500 foot interstate corridor?
They could request a variance.
Up to?
Whatever reason, anywhere.
Up to, what would be the maximum height they could request?
There's no cap.
Okay, so our cell towers are 150 feet right now?
Cell towers are 150 feet tall.
Okay. And if I understand correctly, a couple of the signs out near the interstate are in the neighborhood of 110 to 120 feet and that's about a?
Correct.
A $200 to $300,000 venture to sign of that magnitude?
And?
Or charge $3,000 to go up and service a sign at that altitude?
Probably so.
Okay.
You know, and you have to have the right sized truck to do that. But, you know, visibility is very important when you're driving down the interstate. So, if you could consider that, we sure would appreciate it because it's very important.
On the monument width, if somebody wanted a pylon sign, I know we want to try to go to monuments, but we can still request a pylon up to 30 or 36 or whatever the final number ends up being by the time the commissioners vote on it. We're not trying to eliminate pylon signs, we're encouraging people to go to monument, but if a pylon sign is what they need, we're not putting a moratorium on pylon signs.
Well, no, we're not. Now, I will say that in that case, the way the code's currently written, there's an administrative variance process that's been written in to address things like that. So it wouldn't be the full variance for sign structure area or sign face area or structure height or that, anything like that. It would be only administrative.
If that's an administrative approval, that's not coming back?
Has to do with designs, it would be administrative, it'd come before staff and, you know, if there's a justification that, hey, my brand, my national, my regional, my local brand requires this to be a more of a pylon look and this is how we're going to address that or there's some other site specific requirement that would mandate that, I can't think of anything off the top of my head, then we would be inclined to grant that. Just to say, hey, I'd rather have a pylon sign than a monument, just because I think that would fall outside the administrative variance criteria. They could request it.
Then they would request the variance and they'd come through the process and come before us and make their case whether or against the pylon sign versus the monument sign. All right, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lynn.
Good evening gentlemen, Larry Lynn, owner of Allegra Marketing and Signs in 2009 E grit Circle. I'm speaking to you tonight not only as a sign producer, but as a representative of small businesses through that area of the window signage. Because it is such an integral part of a small business and a very efficient advertising medium. Another definition, I think, needs to be added in that of the graphic windows using the industry standard perforated vinyl. Now this material allows for the unobstructed view from the inside out of a building while concealing the activities within it, and we've spoken to that earlier. But its prime purpose is to display an inviting and compelling message of the products and services offered in a particular business location. Now this message is designed to resonate with the best prospects of that business. It's basic advertising 101. To limit such messaging would limit the profit potential for that business. It should be no reason to limit a small business. Returning to the discussion on the question of safety, the statement on page 32, item seven, where it says, "Window signs shall not obstruct the clear line of sight into the place of business," seems a non sequitur to the cause of security. First of all, not all windows, all businesses want to display the activities transpiring within their business. Consider businesses without windows. The latest example of that is the construction of the Belts on Washington Road. Should they be forced to install windows under the guise of a safety concern? You can't see what's going on in there. Law enforcement wanting to see criminal activities in progress are already too late to an event that probably would have been averted if those inside had seen the trouble coming. This line of reasoning does not stand scrutiny and begs a suspicious question as to the real reason for such a red herring. If that reason is a hollow attempt at imposing one's aesthetic qualities, that is the subject best addressed, not through regulation, but rather through the free market. People will either buy or not. Look, my feeling is I'm aesthetically pleasing, you guys not so much. However, only the applause would probably answer that question. Thank you for your kind attention, I think it's an important matter. Do you have any questions?
That's too easy, thank you. Mr. Bowles, welcome from Richmond County.
Thank you Commissioner, Chairman Cox. I'm with the Builder Association of Metro Augusta, 3732 Executive Center Drive. And I'd just like to go on record that we stand with the Chamber of Commerce, most of our members are members also of the Chamber of Commerce and we're standing with them on their decision. And one of the things I wanted to ask was, how long did it take to get a variance?
It follows the same process as the reason, it takes six weeks.
Six weeks?
For a full variance that comes before, administrative variance could be granted.
In my business, which is insurance repair, where a car runs into a sign and then you've changed the sign ordinance for that existing sign and we've got to go with the new one, that would be a problem I see right away, six weeks, one being down.
Would you have to have a variance or would the new ordinance apply if you had more than 50% damage?
I mean, if it was completely destroyed, like I guess, it sounds like you were talking about, have the option of getting immediately and complying with the ordinance, wanted to keep?
Keep the old sign, you'd go through the variance.
If it didn't comply, then?
Right.
Request a variance and that.
And it could be up to six weeks to get a variance.
It'd be a decision you have to?
But we have time to go ahead and get these, y'all worked a great deal on this and everybody knows what y'all've done and the progress you've got is great. And there's just, it still needs to be tweaked and we've got time to tweak it and get these things right. And that's one of my points, I just wanted to stress that, that if an existing sign gets damaged and it doesn't meet these qualifications and then you've got a sign that's going to be down for two months, your community, you know, that's just a blackout on the community having a sign that can't go back up because you've got a, it's hung up on that regulation.
I've got a question.
Say you could replace the sign that fits the ordinance, right?
Yeah, it could go back immediately.
It'll come back before us.
Comply with the ordinance, right.
Just comply with the ordinance.
What's the typical timeframe in that scenario? What's the typical timeframe of turning around a sign? You know, if a dump truck runs it over and hit the call, you gotta wait on the insurer. What is the typical?
Well, unfortunately now, more county regulations, we have to get engineers involved in it too, so it could be four weeks.
Weeks, okay.
Three to four weeks probably.
How many of those do you have a year?
Three, four.
Three or four catastro, like completely down or?
Right, completely.
Gentlemen, any more questions?
I can remember in instance, the fact of the development there around Lewiston Road where the developer voluntarily delayed putting up the sign. So that does happen too as well?
That does happen too.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Right, thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak for or against this particular?
I had to come up together today.
All right.
Chris Fineff Reed.
Art Fineff.
Fineff Sign Company at 426 Park West Drive in Martinez. A lot of work has been done on this code, but just like the last gentleman said, things need to be tweaked a little bit, we think. Got a few things, I know we're trying to be quick today, but under prohibited signs is pole and pylon signs and I don't think they should be prohibited. There are cases that they can be, that they're useful.
I see that.
I'm sorry, okay.
We have some, we have some.
And I'm gonna try and be quick because I know it's kind of long. But it's just that important to us. My next item is the removal of illegal and the cost of removal of signs. And it goes on to state that a sign company can be held liable for the removal of a sign, even one that is abandoned because we procured the permit. I don't think that that is right and I don't think that a sign company should be held liable for that. We're required to purchase a permit to put up any sign.
Were we reading that right?
Yep.
I think, I think there's a, without looking it up, I mean, there's a progression there. Starts with?
If sign owner cannot be determined, then the cost of removal shall?
Property owner, I think.
Responsible to the?
How would it fall back to us?
If they, if they can't find?
If nobody can be, nobody else can be located, the sign still?
So just go back to the sign, go make him responsible?
That's not right, I don't think that's right. And?
Property owner?
What's, what's the?
Or sign owner.
Where are you reading that from? What's the clause number on that? Page 19, is that what you?
It is, it's page 19 N1 and page 24I. Yeah, I put some quotes in there from it. Page 19 says, "Then to the sign erector and any party that procured the erection of the sign."
All right, so permit holder, so that's either the business owner or the property owner depending. Or if the permit holder, or if there is no permit holder, then to the owner of the property next. If the property owner cannot be found or cannot be determined, then the sign erector or any party that procured the erection.
I don't see how that would fall back to us, any way, shape or form. We sold it to the property owner or the business owner at that point?
So if it's abandoned?
Yeah.
If you don't know who owns the property, we got a problem.
Right, no, no, I know, I agree.
But we just need to take off.
I thought you guys were the last.
We shouldn't be on there.
And issuance of a permit, that's on page 21. The sign application fee with a non-refundable application fee established by the county shall be submitted to the division director or designing. And I think that's new, right? A non-refundable application fee, that sounds different from the permit fee.
That's the permit fee.
Oh, you're just talking about just the permit?
Interchangeable, right.
Okay.
So it's not going to be one and another permit?
No, 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 no.
Okay, okay.
No, we're not going to go down, you got, I kind of read.
Page 21 referencing the wind pressure requirements. My concern here is that, like currently, the code reads that, that, well, actually, it doesn't even read that way, it reads about the same as it does now. But how y'all have always handled it is if something is 15 foot or taller, I have to have a stamped engineered drawing. If it's below 15 feet, we do not. You know, we have wind load charts and everything that we follow to make sure the signs are put up safely. And we also, referencing the item for page 22, when it goes on to say that the drawings be prepared by a structural engineer or other qualified professional meeting or exceeding all requirements of the building code if applicable.
Where's that one?
Page 22, 3I, mhm. In our opinion, we are qualified professionals in this industry. We know everything about signs, structural, soundness of it, the footer details, the wind loads, everything about them, you know. So, is that something you're going to keep like it is now? Anything?
Yeah, I mean, that if applicable at the end, covers it all. So if it applies, if the building code requires a structural engineer to certify the drawings or the footer requirements, that sort of thing. And it refers to those things as examples of things that are required, depending on the height of the sign, the size of the sign, where it's located.
So, and?
Then, I'm just saying, those things could be required if our building code that we have to follow requires those.
And would it? I mean, would it be over 15 feet?
I mean, you guys know the specifics on when those are required and when they're not. If it's required part of the building code, if our building code requires those drawings to be submitted and certifications be submitted, then we're going to ask for them. Doesn't require that, if it's a small sign or it meets?
Like right now, under 15 feet would not require.
Right, then?
Okay, okay.
Because we, you know, we design most of our stuff off of engineered wind charts, footer loc, footer charts.
We're not making, we're not making anything new up, I mean, it's, if it's, if it's an industry standard or?
Even if it was over 15 feet, if we could show the documentation of that, does it have to be, we can't engineer stamp because we're not engineered.
Sure.
But we're using engineered charts. Would that not work?
If our, again, I refer back to the building code and our building department, if they're fine with that, then that's, that's what we're going to follow. If they're fine with that now, then we're going to continue to be fine with that.
But we did it for?
I don't know if they are or not.
Yeah, we'll check it out.
Okay. And issuance of a sign permit. I don't like that the 30, y'all can take 30 days and sometimes you can take pretty close to that. And if you have a revision or amendment, if the 30 days begins back over again, I think two weeks is sufficient.
And I'm gonna add something to that. And the reason why, because we require deposit from our people, like when we, signs from them, you know, 50%. And they call us wanting to know how we're coming along on the sign, well, we're not touching it until we get a permit.
And they already want it tomorrow.
And they want it, so we have to wait up to 30 days sometimes, maybe not all the time.
Not all the time.
But, you know, maybe two weeks.
Well, I'll tell you, we put that in there specifically for this reason, the reason is we wanted to put a deadline, an absolute deadline on us so that?
Let's make that two weeks.
In no case can we, can we take longer than 30 days to issue a permit. Right now, we don't have anything that requires us to permit within a certain timeframe. I feel like that was right. Now, obviously, we're going to issue permits as quickly as we can. In most cases, it's going to take a couple of days, but for those more complicated, for whatever reason, I don't know what that would be. For those more complicated, may need more certifications, the building department may be, they need more certifications and information, I don't know, maybe it'll take 30 days.
Well, even though you, the best efforts are not happening in a couple of days.
No, not.
I mean, it's just not, we're not attacking anybody, we're just saying, the real world doesn't know working two days, three days, right?
It's, you know.
We're waiting between two to four weeks.
Two weeks easy, two weeks easy, and I don't think it should be over that. Our guys already want their signs tomorrow.
They want them tomorrow, man, I'm telling you. Okay, what does it skip from there?
Page 30, principal freestanding signs shall be separated from other principal freestanding signs as follows. In short, the signs have to be a certain distance apart, depending on what size they are. I think, I think that that's kind of excessive, especially when you get to the largest signs. Not that there're going to be a bunch of those, but if the buildings are allowed to be built that close together, you know, and then they, every, every business should have a, be able to have a freestanding sign. It shouldn't be at the discretion of whether the director or designing may approve it or may not approve it. If the distance isn't there, it's just not.
If I'm assigning from 50 square feet to 100 square feet, so now we have to be?
100 feet apart.
100 feet apart. Well, if those front lots are 80 feet across the front, or side by side, you're never going to make that unless you move one clear to the 80th under the property.
And I just don't think it's right that the word may is there really, that, because they could say, just say no, from the way it reads now.
As long as it guarantees them to have a sign on their property, I guess we'd be okay.
So, I mean, each, each sign, each, each piece of property, each individual lot is allowed to have a sign. There's nothing to?
But if we wanted to place it by this drive, right here, by this drive, it's only 30 feet apart from them.
So, again, it says if you can, if you can locate it to comply with this or that, that's the first thing we look for. But at the end of the day, if you absolutely can't do that, then we're not going to say you can't have a sign on a piece of property, because everything else in the code says that.
Some of them get pretty lengthy, you got thousands of feet in between, a thousand, a thousand feet for football fans, it's three and a half of those things.
Right, three and a half.
All right, that's a long?
So that would have to be a really big piece of property.
Right, okay, I'm just letting you know, but it says anything over 200 square feet.
Right.
All right, so?
Okay. Page 32, number eight, signs along arterial roadways. And the list of roads is, is great. We just looked at it and thought that we needed to add a couple more in this respect, that Lewiston Road changes to Hereford Farm Road and that should be included. William Few changes to Hardy McManus and that should be included. And perhaps Evans Tullock and Wheeler Road too. It's a very short part of Wheeler Road that's in Columbia County, I understand that.
These are, these are actually called out in our, in our road index as arterial road. That's why they're listed like that.
Okay, but we didn't know when the change is from one name to another, is it continued through?
Well, if it, if it's still classified as an arterial despite the road name change, we've listed it here, but it, like South, South Bell Air Road becomes North Bell Air Road.
Right.
They're both arterials despite the name change.
Okay.
But where?
I'm not trying to be picky, I just?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just explaining, no.
Yeah, that's all I want.
So Lewiston Road, where it becomes, where it crosses over Columbia Road and becomes Hereford Farm Road, that ceases to be an arterial. At that point, that's a collector road.
Okay.
That's our index, that's, that's the reference.
Oh, I don't know.
Interstate signs. We, I mentioned the issue with not allowing a pole sign. The newest version of the code that the chamber had come up with, we pretty much agree with that, we like that, the overall height of 100 feet. It says 100 to 110, depending on the size of the building, just 100 feet, but rather than 150 or 200 square feet on the sign face, that they're calling for 200. Overall height of 100 feet, 200 on the face, it's an interstate sign.
And the reason, the reason for that is 100 square, 100 square foot sign at 100 feet will look this big, that's certainly not going to do a lot of good, it's going to make you drop down. All right, so if you're going to allow interstate signs, everybody should be, 5,000 square foot business should have just as big a sign as anybody else there on the interstate. If they want to afford it and buy it and put it up there and advertise from it, I believe they should be able to do so. 200 square feet in the air, 100 feet does not look very big.
I like the, I like the, I made a little note here about keeping the playing field even. I like the sticker issue where y'all can look at it and see that it is a permitted sign. I made a statement earlier that by the grace of God, we have never had a sign fall over. But we've had a customer that didn't go with us, they chose another sign company. Now, it was between six months and a year later, their sign fell over, their pole sign fell over, it was Uptown Cheapskate, there was no footer. So it really is important to keep an eye out for that. And it does cost us money each year to be UL certified, the components of the sign are different as well because it's UL certified.
Not much is this money, it's not a little bit, it costs us around $20,000 to be UL listed. And if, it's, we have to pay a fee every year, inspected three times a year.
Or?
Or four, depending, I mean, I'm going to say one to make us pay. So it is kind of important and we UL label everything. So if it goes out, it goes out, but there's a lot of them out here that do not have it. I don't know how you can enforce that except for?
Just keep an eye out, keep an eye out and?
Can't buy a permit without it.
Then we get down to the, the whole beef of the, of the matter here kind of to us is the allowable square footages for building signs and pole, and pole signs are just egregiously disproportionate as you get, as the building gets bigger. And the, the, where the, where the sign, the building is from zero? And the, the, where the, where the sign, the building is from zero to twenty-five hundred, and then it jumps from, from, it might jump fifteen hun- fifteen thousand feet.
Where on pole signs or?
Pole or buildings. You can see a chart that I, that I have, have put down there, how, when you turn it into percentages, how you can see that it is just, it's just grossly unproportionate for the businesses. Same with the pole signs, we've listed what we like, but when you're talking about the building signs, you could get much more simpler if you decided to, where everybody is just nine percent of the front fascia of your building, period. That would make it a lot simpler. Mark, though, happens to be the expert on, on square footages in buildings and what looks good there, and he's got some?
I just put a couple of attachments in there for y'all, and basically, they're just showing that the wide variation on the building especially, if you're gonna limit these things to monuments, you're gonna keep them under twenty-five feet tall, and that's gonna be an insistent thing, it can't limit the big stores, they have a postage stamp on their signs, right? I have, there's, there's a GB shoes, although it's not in Columbia County, I knew the measurements on it, and I'm using it. Basically, under the new code that we would have, that's a hundred and twenty-five square feet, that's with the arterial increase, right? Right now, it's showing that it has two thirty-seven. And as a, and if it wasn't a GSO like it would be, we would be at nine percent of that front, which would even be greater than what shows on the existing sign, at two thirty-seven.
Which picture am I looking at?
Don't have it?
Well, I have pictures, I just don't know what you're talking about.
Here and here.
GB shoes is what he was talking about.
Okay. Richmond County, Columbia County?
That's in Richmond County, but I just happen to know the building sizes and what's on it, because we're doing some work over there also.
So, yeah, that was Carolina.
Another, another exponent, and that's what I'm saying, is that this one goes from twenty-five thousand, six hundred square feet. So that would include from, what, fifteen to fifty?
Mm-hmm.
So a building twice that size would have to have the same size sign, and a building half this size to have the same size sign. That's what we're trying to say, and it may need to be broken down a little bit, from fifteen to twenty-five, from twenty-five to thirty-five, from thirty-five to fifty, you know, something like that.
Or from, from, yeah, twenty-five hundred to five thousand, five thousand to ten thousand.
But we have some recommendations that we like, but, you know, it's not our call.
Okay, we, we keep talking about lots of numbers here, but I'm looking at the charts here, and it looks like with the exception of two sign face areas, the county and the Chamber agree in sizes.
Well, they do, but I'm not, I don't agree with the Chambers either. I think it's too, still too restrictive, it's too broad, right? I wasn't invited to the last one to go over this, so we're going over it ourselves. But just one more note, here's a hundred square foot sign.
And we do need to wrap up, so we got some, I'm sure we have some other folks that'd like to come in.
There's some other things here, though, that need to be looked at, we're almost finished. And then the pole signs, of course, are the same thing, the pylons, I had one in there.
And you have those.
That looks like this. Right? There's two sizes. This size is now current in Evans, at Columbia Plaza. The, no, the shops in Camelot. The Columbia Plaza sign is one that we put in Thompson, right? It has a hundred and ninety square feet, at thirty-three overall feet high. The Camelot is sixteen feet high, at a hundred and twelve. If you've been by Camelot sign, you can't read it, it's too small.
Not fast enough to see what's in there as you're driving past.
With all the tenants they have, they need to be increased. And we also put a recommendation in there for that. But, like I said, we're not gonna take up much more of your time on this.
Okay, we do need to wrap it up, because y'all, y'all have had about twice the time.
We appreciate it too, we really appreciate it.
Wrap it up, please.
We're done.
All right, well, we appreciate it.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Let's, do we have anybody else that'd like to speak either for or against? Let's take maybe two more, and let's call the question on this, yes, sir. Now, if I could, are you, are you with Finif signs, sir? Fine enough, yes, sir, okay, let's, let's see if anybody else wants, I understand that, but, but, but y'all have had some time, you've taken the last ten minutes? No, sir, hang on, let's see if anybody else wants to speak, if nobody else does, then we'll let you come up, okay? Is there anybody else representing a different company that would like to come up and speak? Nobody else, okay, sir, you're the last one.
All right, thank you. I'm Eddie Larson, sales manager of Finif Sign Company, but to fill you in on Eddie Larson, he's president of the Illinois Sign Association twice, the Central Sign Association two terms, the board of directors of the International Sign Association for six years, involved in twelve sign code ordinances. You guys are very amenable, I'm not knocking that, you're doing good work. Only thing I mentioned earlier was somebody said the word aesthetics. I think you will agree, you can't not incorporate that word into the basis for any sign code today. You can't tell a person what color tie to wear, let alone tell them what aesthetic values, you bet, you walk around that, but don't use that in your code. Okay, the other thing is, what I see here is an increase for enforcement staff. That's what I see in this whole package. And that may be good, may be bad, but can you afford it? And will it be directed by the, in the right direction, or will they start applying their own influences, their own bent, like they had in the past? UL sign labeling, you've had that in the last three codes. I have a CD that I'll provide to you with at least thirty-five signs on it that are up, hit up for years in this business area without a UL label. Some of them were put in by the Chinaman out of Atlanta over the weekend, you know? Some of them were put up by a Latino over a weekend. But the enforcement is lacking there, so if you're gonna put it in there, you need to be able to enforce it, and that cause, that creates jobs. And you should broaden that UL to another category called ETL, or, that's electron, electric testing laboratories. They're rated almost unequal to UL. And the Canadian label, if you think so, but there are several American sign companies owned by Canadians now, one in Atlanta in particular. But I just wanted to bring it, bring up a couple of points there that, what you've done is a lot of work. Been there, been there, done that many times, from Little Towns to Chicago. And Chicago just recently adopted some ordinance changes which became favorable, which were very punitive before. It'd take a year to get a permit. I lived twelve years in Florida, it would take six months to get a wall sign permit, you know, for no reason at all. So that's what you, you wanna avoid going down that, that road. Those businesses, they make decisions on their dreams, and don't take their dreams away, okay? Thank you for your time.
With that, we'll close the public hearing, and gentlemen, I'd like to have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve ordinance seventeen dash oh four, revision of section ninety dash one three five signs.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
We'd like to say, discussion, there has been a lot of hard work from staff, a lot of meetings, the public's been involved in this. And I think we've done a good job, public and staff. Want to remind you, there are two more readings. Feel strongly on the tweaking, there are two meetings left.
You know, over the last couple of weeks, I could not tell you how many hours that I've spent meeting with different folks, different business people, different members of the public, different people in the sign business, different commissioners, different staff members. And it looks like to me that we're within literally two sign face areas and a couple of heights. The interstate, interstate sign overlay is something that I think the commissioners should consider, and I know we've discussed it among ourselves, Commissioner Richardson's in the back of the room over here, and as recently as last Friday, we discussed it. And I think it's incumbent upon them to, to meet with you guys and to make any additional changes over and above the ones that staff has already made and researched. We cleaned up the ordinance from last time that had the inconsistencies in it, so I'm happy with that. But with any additional changes, I'm comfortable with the commissioners who will make the final decision, because again, this is just a recommendation to them, that they will meet with business owners, they will meet with, with the sign companies, they'll meet with the Chamber, and I'm sure between all of you guys, that you all can come up with something that is agreeable to all parties. Any other comments? Okay, that being said, let's move to a vote, all in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero, it moves to the Board of Commissioners. All right, next issue. And if any of you need to leave, please go ahead, if you'd like to stay around, we've got lots more entertaining stuff here. All right, Ms. Bulte filed VA one seven zero two zero one.
This is a request for a variance to section ninety-one thirty-five, which is our sign code for the property at forty-two forty-four Washington Road. This was tabled from the February sixteenth meeting, so I'm gonna go through it kind of quick, because we have already seen it once. This property is located on the west side of Washington Road, it is in Evans Town Center and is zone C two, general commercial. Under the current code, this property is allowed two wall signs totaling a hundred and ninety-two square feet. Their variance request was to permit a third wall sign on the building on the side of the tower. This was going to bring them to a total of two hundred and seventy-three square feet. We did receive additional information from the applicants late this afternoon. Y'all do have a summary of what I believe they're going to present to you this evening as a compromise. At the time of the staff report, staff recommendation of disapproval remained unchanged. The proposed revisions, as we understand them, are acceptable, but obviously, we did not have time to update everything. So I believe they are here to present that, but that concludes our recommendation.
All right. Now that you guys are warmed up? The applicant here, okay, give us your name and home address, you're anxious.
Gibbs, fourteen eighty-nine, Litchfield Lane, Evans, Georgia. And like you said, we think it's a, you can encourage us to seek a compromise for this, and so what we're gonna do is get rid of the, the wordage, urgent care, and weight loss on the other side, and just have the emblem up, which will reduce our square footage totals. Which will reduce our total square footage from one ninety-one to one thirty-seven. So we'll, we'll go down by fifty-three square foot on our square footage total. If you guys would approve the variance to have the secondary, or the third sign, I'm sorry, on the Mullins Crossing facing, right?
All right. Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Here, I move to approve VA one seven zero two zero one, as submitted, headed this afternoon by the, by the applicant with total signage of one thirty, one hundred and thirty-seven.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
And staff concurs with the measurements?
Yes.
Great, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Okay, Miss Hall is, went home? Okay, Mr. Strickland, you gonna fill in for her on the massage operator's license?
Uh, sure.
At this point, I would like to recognize Judge Mike Anis, I noticed you in the room, and I would feel remiss by not acknowledging you. None of us are in trouble tonight, when a judge shows up, it usually is not a good thing.
Uh, this massage operator's license is for Deidre Steric at thirty-six eighty-five Riverwatch Parkway. Aaron Hall has done the background research on this and recommended approval on this massage operator's license.
Okay, this is a public hearing, is the applicant here this evening? Applicant's not here, okay, is there anyone that'd like to speak either for or against this particular massage operator's license? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the massage operator's license for the applicant thirty-six eighty-five Riverwatch Parkway.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. I'd like to exercise a point of personal privilege, we do have six temporary use permits tonight, and if we could, if the gentleman don't object, I'd like to take all six of those as one item, if satisfactory, okay? Let's see, who's got all those, Ms. Bulte?
I have most of them.
Most of them?
Most of them. The first one is a temporary use permit fifty-five seventy-six Harlem Grove Town Road. This property is zoned residential agriculture, and the applicants are requesting to place a travel trailer on the property while they prepare to construct a permanent residence, and staff is recommending approval. The second temporary use permit is for forty-five seventy-five Lantern Woods Drive. This property is zoned S one, it's the location of the new charter school, and they are requesting a trailer to use as a temporary office during construction of that school, and staff is recommending approval. The third temporary use permit is for property off Evans Town Center Boulevard, it is zoned, actually zoned PUD. And this is for a construction office as well as a trailer for material storage, and staff is recommending approval. The fourth permit off of Jamie Drive is zoned residential agriculture. The applicant purchased this property after the home, you can see on the aerial burned down, she's requesting to place a travel trailer on the property until she can get a new home moved to this location, and staff is recommending approval.
Fifth permit is fifty-seven forty-three Bardot Drive, currently zoned R residential. Temporary, temporary travel trailer is supposed to be placed during construction of a home or renovation of the existing trailer, they don't really know which way they're gonna go yet. The bank does own this trailer, and it may disappear quickly. They just, they wanted the ability to have the trailer there while they sorted that out. Staff is recommending approval on this.
And the final temporary use permit is for forty-four seventy-five Washington Road. This property is zoned C two, general commercial. They're getting ready to construct a business at this location, and they're requesting a temporary trailer for use as a construction office and material storage, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, gentlemen, do you have any questions on any of these TUPs? If not, I need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve item two B one, two, three, four, five, six, I'll forego the math parcel numbers.
Your second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. All right, Ms. Bulte, River Oaks.
Yes, sir, this is a request for approval of a conceptual plan for River Oaks subdivision. This is an R two, single-family residential development to be located off Hardy McManus Road. It involves four parcels totaling a hundred and three acres. This is an aerial of the site, and there's submitted existing conditions map showing topography and existing trees. There's an existing, a couple existing houses as well. The front three parcels were rezoned earlier this year for R two. This was the illustrative plan submitted with that rezoning. Their conceptual plan generally follows that same layout. They are requesting a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty lots on the hundred and three acres. These lots will all meet the R two standards with minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet. The plan includes a pedestrian network of sidewalks and nature trails that will eventually connect to the Uche Creek Greenway. One of the more unique features of this subdivision is they are proposing a narrower street section with twenty-two feet with sidewalks and street trees as well as street lights. The narrower street section's going to be offset with a ban on on-street parking, and they do have a plan for the HOA to enforce that, that has been effective for them elsewhere. And they are planning to provide additional off-street parking areas to accommodate that, that ban on the on-street parking. And there is a dissimilar zoning buffer required all the way around this development, but they are not planning to mass grade, so they will not be required the fifty-foot buffer. And they do have the buffer shown from Hardy McManus as well. Um, and they do have the buffer shown from Hardy McManus as well, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay, this is not a public hearing. However, I do see the developers here. Gentlemen, do you have any questions of, of him? Okay, if not, I'd like to have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, approve the conceptual plan River Oaks. Tax MAC, uh, zero seven one, parcel zero zero four, zero zero four A, zero zero four one, and zero six five.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? This looks remarkably similar to what you brought in last time. Are there any changes? They're identical. Okay, great. All right, gentlemen, all in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. All right, uh, Ms. Mystery, Calory Three.
Chair, this is the preliminary plat for Calory Three. The location is off Baker Place Road, and it's sixty-seven lots on thirty-two, thirty-eight point two acres, and the zoning is planned unit development. The average lot size is ten thousand seven hundred and twenty-three square feet, and a minimum lot size of seventy-eight sixty-four square feet meets requirements of the PUD. The minimum front is twenty feet from the property line and five-foot side and ten-foot rear setbacks. Sidewalks are required on both sides of the street, and a walking trail is provided, um, with seven point one acres of open space, and staff recommends approval.
Okay, this is not a public hearing. Gentlemen, do you have any questions of staff? Would like a motion, please. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the preliminary plat for Calory Three, tax MAC zero five one, parcel fourteen. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Mystery, uh, we've got McCormick Hills, please.
Thank you, this is another preliminary plat, McCormick Hills, which is located off Ann's Wood Road. It is sixteen lots on seven point nine acres, and the zoning is R-three. The average lot size is eleven thousand four hundred and seven square feet with a minimum of seventy-five hundred square feet. The lots have a fifty-foot front setback and ten-foot side and ten-foot rear. Sidewalks are not required, and one point six acres of open space is provided. An easement has been left to allow future development of the property, and staff recommends approval.
This is not a public hearing. Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Not, I need a motion, please. Here, I make a motion to approve the preliminary, uh, plat for McCormick Hills. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Have no final plats or plan revisions. We do have a number of, uh, rezonings, uh, that fall under the public hearing category. The first, uh, is item RZ one seven zero four zero one. Ms. Bulte?
Yes, sir, this is a request for a conditional use for massage at five forty-eight Blackburn Drive. Property is, um, located at the end of Blackburn Drive, uh, to the west of Fury's Ferry, and is currently zoned P-one, um, professional. There is an existing massage business operating at this location, um, and the request for the conditional use comes about, um, she's looking to lease, uh, space to an additional therapist to run her business out of this location as well, which does require the conditional use to be approved. Um, this area is located in, there we go, the Neighborhood's Character area, which is generally a residential use, however, this is a existing professional subdivision, um, and there's no reason this use should not be compatible with that Neighborhood's Character area, and staff is recommending approval.
This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward, give us your name, home address, and any additional information you'd like us to have?
Hi, my name is Barbara Marshawn. My home address is, I was gonna give you my business address, thirteen eighty-four Montrose Place in Evans. Um, I have been doing massage in this location for, um, almost thirteen years. So, we're not really planning any changes to building, the grounds, the parking is sufficient. Um, I have, uh, another therapist who wants to establish her own business in that location. We're not making any changes to the services being offered. Um, we're both, um, fully licensed by the state, and our massage operator's licenses are in order, and, um, we would just like to move forward with this so that we can carry on our business as usual.
Gentlemen, any questions? Say that that was your resident.
That is not my resident. The address I gave them is my residence. This address is five forty-eight Blackburn Drive. Not the same.
I thought you found it, like you said, that was your resident. Gentlemen, any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion. Here, I make a motion to approve file RZ one seven zero four zero one, conditional use. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Mr. Butler, file RZ one seven zero four zero two.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is a request, uh, for a rezoning of a portion of property at zero six eight zero one nine B. Uh, it's zero point four four six acres, currently zoned R-one, uh, rezoned as a C-two, general commercial. Location of the property, again, this is a, a portion of this highlighted property. We'll see it in a minute, uh, what the almost half acre looks like. Again, located on the south side of Columbia Road, and also on the west side of South Old Bell Air Road. Probably to the north, I was rezoned in September, uh, to C-two for a gas station. This request, uh, comes before you because when they rezoned the property and then went to the site plan, they don't have enough property, uh, to have a gas station there with, uh, we have a hundred-foot setback for the building, uh, against residential property, and that has, um, necessitated this, this rezon, this rezon request. And again, property to the east is zoned C-two and CC, to the north, south, and also west is zoned residential in nature. Airview of the property, again, currently undeveloped. And it's review of the property. And this is the overall plat. Again, this was what was rezoned, uh, to C-two before, and again, gives you the better idea of what's there. And also, this is the area that's supposed to be rezoned here, again, not this entire property. This is a conceptual site plan, uh, that was submitted by the applicant. Um, again, shows a convenience store, um, they also indicated a restaurant, which we'll get into in a minute, and also a conceptual photo. Um, they, this is actually over on, I believe it's Dean's Bridge Road, uh, in Augusta. This is kind of their, their normal development type. They're just showing you what it's gonna look like. And in terms of future land use, uh, this is in the Evans Neighborhood's Character area. Uh, when this came before, before, uh, staff did recommend this approval. It was, uh, currently, it wa, it was approved, uh, with a condition that we'll be getting into. Um, future applications will be probably not recommended for, uh, approval for, uh, commercial in this area, because again, it is a residential area. So, the condition that is on here, um, when this was rezoned, uh, the first condition that's there is use limited to a convenience store of gas with a plan agreed to by the owner developer and staff. Uh, that is from the Board of Commissioners. Um, it's, from our estimation, very clear that it's supposed to be a gas station only. Um, so that is why we are also carrying this over with the, uh, with this portion of the property. Again, they're gonna take this half acre and combine it with the other one. And also, we have another condition as well, uh, for keeping all trees ten inch caliber or greater. That was also, um, placed on, placed at the time of the, uh, of the rezoning. Again, staff has recommended approval with the, with the, the conditions as shown.
So, when the Board of Commissioners, um, heard this particular rezoning, um, after we had passed it through last time, they approved it for gas station only, not restaurant. They were very specific with that?
It says convenience store with gas. That is the exact condition.
Okay.
And then, and then also, on the application, the first go-around, their narrative stated convenience store with gas. Then when their site plan, which we never saw, you guys never saw either, went to VOC, it had a convenience store with a restaurant on there. And again, we are, you know, trying to get into the heads of the VOC in some ways and find out, you know, ha, having that, having the restaurant on there and then, then not mentioning it is, in our opinion, fairly clear that they do not mean a restaurant to be there.
So hypothetically, uh, if we get a motion for approval, that does not affect the property with the use. That doesn't get us into the trick bag there, where we're, we, we, we've countered some, we can't counter something the Board of Commissioners has already approved. They're the only ones that can change that.
They can, what they could, and again, this is a somewhat illegal opinion, um, they could clarify what that, what they meant there. And I would definitely say that the attorney needs to be involved if they could actually do that.
This, let me, let me clarify that, too. This application deals only with that small strip of land that was highlighted on the plan. Uh, doesn't affect anything outside of that.
But it can't be construed that we're approving a restaurant.
You guys want to approve a restaurant on this property, little sliver, you can. That's what you, that's what you're dealing with tonight.
I understand.
It doesn't have anything to do with parcel one, right?
I just don't want, I don't want this to come back and haunt us if, if we approve this, and, and it can be construed that, that, the, the planning commissioners approved a restaurant when they considered this rezoning. So, can I clarify that the request is to approve convenience store and restaurant on that small parcel?
Right. That's their request. Again, our staff conditions propose to make it consistent with the original rezoning, limit it to gas station only.
Okay.
Convenience store with gas.
Okay, we're probably overthinking this, but still.
I agree. Why they pay you the big bucks?
Yeah, that's, that's it. That's, that's what, that's what, yeah. Yeah. Ma'am? Which part? The last thing I said about us overthinking it?
About maybe...
The, the, the concern I've got, and, and again, I, I, I come from, from an advertising background, so the fine print makes a difference. I, I've actually seen an automobile dealer that, that jokingly interchanged the word bananas for money in his disclaimer, that, you know, you bring in twenty-five thousand two hundred and forty-seven bananas, and that's all you have to bring for a new car. A guy brought in twenty-five thousand two hundred and forty-seven bananas and said, "Where's my car?" And he got it. So that's why I probably go a little overboard, making sure that, that, you know, when we're discussing things, we don't counter what has, has already been approved at another level, and it, it generates something that could be potentially used against us, because we're here to protect you guys, and not, and not create situations where the county, we have to spend money on county attorneys to defend something that we may have innocently assumed. So that's, that's why, you know, me in particular, I tend to try to, to, to make sure we, we have discussion like this on record, so that, uh, that again, uh, our commissioners, uh, our staff, our, our legal team, they have on record specifically what was discussed on these matters. And again, we, we're all appointed officials, and I think the, the gentleman that appointed us look for us to go overboard to make sure that we're protecting the county and, and the taxpayers. Yes, ma'am? My wife says that all the time. But thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? I tell you, could we let the applicant go first? Yes, ma'am, then we'll... The applicant's here, please come forward.
Uh, my name is Manpreet Singh, uh, I'm with the AMPM Gas. We submitted, um, the drawing, site drawing, um, with Board of Commissioners when they approved it, and, uh, I think on the letter that we got, it does say, uh, the site plan being approved, um, but it doesn't say with the restaurant on it. Now, but I do have, um, um, I, I thought that you guys probably had the hard copy, so I didn't bring the hard copy with me. I do have it on my cell that what we presented to, uh, Commissioners when they approved it. Uh, it does say, um, restaurant, uh, convenience store, uh, on it.
I think that's the concept they submitted for this. A little bit different. But, but to, to address, the, the approval letter mentioned a condition that, and, and I was there at the, at the meeting, so, and, and I signed the letter, I'm pretty sure, too. Um, the condition is that the use is limited to a convenience store with gas and a site plan to be agreed upon between you guys, staff, and the developer. Developer really doesn't matter at this point, so it's, a site plan has to be agreed upon between you guys and staff. That's not saying that they approved the site plan that you guys submitted to them. They, they just said, everybody come to an agreement on a site plan, but the use limited to only a convenience store with gas, nothing else.
And again, that's why I was being very specific with, with asking the questions, because I don't, I don't want there to be a misunderstanding on what we're approving tonight. If you have an issue with, with the use that's been approved, you need to take that up with the Board of Commissioners, not here in planning. Would that be correct?
Right, and, and there would have to be a specific request for the rest of the parcel to expand the, the allowed uses.
Important thing is, we're voting on this small...
Tiny little strip.
...piece of property. What's been happened before has nothing to do tonight. I'm voting on that piece.
Correct. But we're not dealing with the use. All we're doing is looking at this one small strip, so you have room enough to, to abide by what staff has recommended on the setbacks and, and positioning the existing proposal on the property. Correct?
Those code requirements, right.
So for the use, we have to come back in here again and, and do the same thing?
Yeah, if, if you wanted to expand the use beyond that of, again, what was approved as a convenience store with gas, then you'd have to make a specific application asking for that for the entire site, for, for, for parcel one and parcel three. That's what you want to do. If you want to add a restaurant in there, you gotta come back and ask for the entire site.
Can I ask you what kind of restaurants you're talking about?
Talking to, uh, a Hardy's.
Hardy's?
Yeah, and they're kinda interested in there, so, like...
All right. Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, you'd like to come up? And please give us your name and home address.
My name is Cheryl Hunt. Fourth Old Bell Air Road, act across the way, to South Old Bell Air Road, which is adjacent, let me just turn the microphone up, which is adjacent to the property in which we're talking about, here on the corner. I was unfortunate not to be able to come to the meeting in which this was voted in for the gas station. I think my husband had a health procedure, uh, medical procedure, and we weren't able to come. If we were able, if we had been able to come, we would have fought this gas station coming in. Before, at some kind of function that was done here, I stood up here and spoke that we did not need another gas station at this site. We've got one at Lewiston Road, at North Bell Air, or at Bell Air and Columbia Road, and, excuse me, and on around, that scared me, on around at South Bell Air and Bell Air. My property, or our property, is on the other side of Columbia Road. I was raised in the house in which we live. My grandparents bought it in nineteen forty-two, they had a dairy farm there. This property in which we're speaking of was part of their property. It's very close to my heart. I know the county is growing, it's growing by leaps and bounds. You know it more than I do. I went to the school which Home Depot sits right now. That's where I graduated, in the hot gymnasium. Um, if they're wanting more land, it was poor judgment on theirs not to request more land. I don't know why they need more land. I fight, I'm against them receiving more land. That's my thought.
All right, thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion. Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ one seven zero four zero two, rezoning from R-one to C-two. Make sure those conditions do include the fact that restaurant is not a permitted. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Oh, four, three, three one, you're against? Three one. Hey, Mr. Butler, file RZ one seven zero four zero four.
Uh, Chair, this is a request, uh, for a rezoning from RA to, uh, C-two, general commercial, uh, nor, in the northeast corner, the intersection of Riceboro Road and Appleton Harlem Road. Uh, it's for five acres. I would seem to have a lot of gas stations this evening. This is the, actually, this is a, it's a portion of these two parcels. That's why we're showing you both of them here. Again, probably to the north is Z-C, through everything else around it is RA, except for the other gas station across the street, that is currently Z-C two. The airview of the property, again, it is at the, uh, the roundabout, that's at Pumpkin Center. And the street view, again, currently undeveloped. This is a plat showing a portion of the properties. And then this is the rezoning sketch that has been submitted by the applicant. You can see that it's a total of five acres shown here. And this is a conceptual sketch plan. Again, the applicant has indicated that, you know, this is not to be taken as a concept. It's more of a, "We're gonna put a gas station here. Here is an idea that we have, but they will be coming back to do something possibly different." That's the reason for the conditions that we'll be talking about here in a minute. And also exceptional elevations of the proposed gas station. In terms of future land use, this is an Appleton Harlem Employment Center, so the rezone to C2 is, is in character with that in this area. Again, also having the gas station across the street doesn't hurt you as well. And one thing that we, I do want to mention is that, you know, this is probably the beginning of some increased pressure in the area, so likely to see more coming into this, this area. And so, so it does recommend approval of the following conditions. Again, these are generally there because we have some unknowns with the property. We do have some minor concerns, again, that's why there's having to come out before you guys. So again, when there's a bit of a negotiated process. And then also, we do have stormwater ponds. Again, that property does, it does drain to the front naturally, so we would like to see that be screened up at the front and also not have fencing if we don't have to. And then also, combination plat showing the five acres recorded within sixty days. That includes staff recommendation.
This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here this evening? Mr. Prather? Give us your name and home address. Some of us know you.
Lionel Prather, twenty-seven oh six Bellevue Avenue, Augusta, Georgia, three oh nine oh nine. As Will said, this is the beginning of a, maybe a, a commercial area of, of our property, our family property. We've been, been in our family since the fifties, so we are very proud of this area. We're gonna pass covenants and restrictions for all of it and master plan all this. It's gonna be well thought out and well done. Staff suggestions of the quality of the construction, we'll probably, we'll probably go further than that on the quality of the buildings and really think through this properly, so we agree with all the conditions.
Don't it? Any questions? Thanks, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Give us your name and home address.
Name Leo Price. I live at twenty-four eleven Telfair Lane, Hattrick Glen, right across the street from it. Just moved from Richmond County to Columbia County, this nice quiet subdivision. Got Pumpkin Center, you got the circle right there. We already have trucks coming back, passing the weigh station on I-20. Boys, this looks like it gonna be another truck stop, but it's closer to I-20. It's, it's gonna be a nuisance right there for the, for the, for the circle. You're gonna have trucks coming in and out of there. I would have never bought my home in Hattrick Glen if I knew this was coming.
Thanks, sir. Good ask. Mr. Prather, are you gonna have overnight truck parking?
I have no diesel. No diesel. Like I said, you know, with all the trucks coming down there now, they just need to put up, you need to put a weigh station right there on Wrightsboro Road, right there, there to get all the trucks coming up and out.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ one seven dash oh four oh four rezoning from RA to C2 for five acres, corner, northeast corner of intersection of Wrightsboro, Appleton Harlem Roads.
Go here, second. Second. All in favor? Who carries four zero? All right, Ms. Balty, file RZ one seven zero four zero five PRD. I believe this is our second real PRD?
Third request.
Third request?
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning at twelve forty-four Appleton Harlem Road from RA Residential Agriculture to the PRD Planned Residential Development. This property is located diagonally from the other property from the previous request, so southwest corner of Appleton Harlem and Wrightsboro. It is currently zoned residential agriculture, as is the majority of the surrounding property. Hattrick Glen across the street shows up RA on our map. It is actually R1. This is the aerial of the property. Just to the south, this property is the parcel under construction for the new middle school. And the proposal for this property is to, well, here's the existing site. It's currently undeveloped. But the proposal is to develop up to five hundred and seventy-five lots on the two hundred and thirty acres. That is an overall density of two and a half units per acre. With this PRD zoning, this is, the zoning approval also approves the conceptual plan, so we will be considering the layout tonight as well. The overall layout of the neighborhood, it consists of a main spine road. It comes in at Hawes Branch Parkway here, with neighborhoods branching off of it. This is a fairly typical layout for the larger neighborhoods in the county. Lot sizes in this development range from a minimum of five thousand square feet to a minimum of seventy-five hundred square feet in some of the larger districts. These are subdivided into four different categories, as you can see in the upper left-hand corner there. Minimum side setbacks would be seven and a half feet. The PRD ordinance does require ten feet for side setbacks unless the applicant can justify a reduction. In this case, this development is preserving thirty-eight percent of the property as open space, that's eighty-eight acres, and is proposing a managed, structured stormwater system as well. Between these two factors, staff is comfortable with the reduction to the seven and a half foot side setbacks. There was an additional reduction requested for lots running on the, the park areas. There's several of them throughout the development. They were requesting that lots running on these park areas be allowed five-foot side setbacks. Again, the PRD ordinance does require that there be a, a character of the development to support reduced side setbacks. There's not been any additional information submitted for these lots to kind of demonstrate that character, to show how they'll be different from the rest of the lots in the subdivision. So at this time, staff is not supporting that request, but we are suggesting a condition that would allow them to submit that character information at the time of preliminary plat, to allow that reduction to be approved at the preliminary plat stage. This development does currently have only one access point. It is the Hawes Branch Parkway access. This is also the access point for the middle school, which does create a bit of a traffic concern. Obviously, you're gonna have some conflict with school traffic, morning and afternoon rush hours. As a result, staff is proposing a condition limiting the number of lots in this development to three hundred until a second access point can be provided. The applicants have provided a couple stubouts here and they've indicated another one may be possible, one of those two lots. But they don't have access to that property or easements yet, which is kind of, the, the purpose behind the condition is to ensure that they do not develop all, nearly six hundred of these lots with that single access point shared with the school. There are multiple park areas proposed within this development. One of the somewhat unique features is the intent behind this is that all of the lots will be within a seven-minute walk of a park. And to support that, they have submitted a pedestrian plan with sidewalks, nature trails throughout the development. This property is within the neighborhood's character area on our future land use map, which is intended for the development of residential neighborhoods. The intended density is one to four units per acre. The two and a half acres proposed for this development does meet the intent of that character area. And staff is recommending approval, but with several conditions. As mentioned, the number of lots being limited to three hundred until a second full access point onto Wrightsboro Road is provided. They have, they are proposing fifty-foot buffers. We are proposing a condition that those do remain undisturbed, which they have indicated is their intent, which is proposing that as insurance. And then the, the setback condition as well, that the lots will follow the seven and a half foot side setback unless they can come back at preliminary plat and, and demonstrate that change in the character to support the reduction to the five foot. And then several traffic conditions. The biggest, main one, one of them being that the driveways, instead of being twenty feet, be twenty-five feet. Traffic has just seen that this works better from an enforcement standpoint to ensure that vehicles don't end up blocking the sidewalk. Obviously, with the school and the pedestrian network they're proposing, hopefully you'll see a lot of people walking on the sidewalks and rather not have vehicles blocking their way. And then several other traffic conditions related to engineering and design of the roadways. And that concludes the recommendation.
With a number of parks, have y'all done a green space calculation? On how much of the, of the development is dedicated to green space?
It's a little over thirty-eight percent that's dedicated to green space.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any questions, staff? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? I don't know if y'all can come up as a tag team or by yourself. All right, please.
Uh, my name's Keith Lawrence, two eleven Dixon Court, Evans, Georgia, three oh eight oh nine. Just to go with what Danielle went, we wanted to kind of cover a, a few things on here for everybody that may not be aware. You know, we're really excited to present this two hundred and thirty acre PRD. I think it's the largest one that you guys have seen. So it's, it's been a pro, it's been a work in progress, for sure. Obviously, the project is, we've talked about, it's located near the roundabout. You can, we've gone over that. But really, what I want to say is, we're kind of fortunate to work with the Prather family that's had this in their family so long. It's a, they've engaged, we're steward to come up with this brand and they're looking at, it's basically, the whole area's gonna be branded as Green Point. And as such, the green space obviously is a key component of what we're looking at. And they have a really unique opportunity in that they control all the land, basically north of I-20, all the way down to the middle school. And it's always been their vision to create a unique gateway into Columbia County. We've talked about that for the last eight years. You guys identified it on your twenty thirty-five vision plan. And so I think everybody's in agreement that this needs to be a unique area in itself. You kind of, doesn't need to be done like, nothing, no, no offense, but nothing like Lewiston Road where you've got a, kind of a mismatch of commercial and everything. Needs to be done where it's kind of united, cohesive with material types, signage, everything, the presentation is, really looks the same. And so, we're all on board on that side. This is kind of really just the first phase of a larger project. And we've talked with staff and it's going to continue to be something that evolves. And you guys will be back again at a certain point, obviously, and continue to massage this to come up with what will really be a unique area for Columbia County itself. The, you know, twenty thirty-five plan envisions this as commercial, as a, as a commercial and residential node. So we're, you know, we're kind of executing through that. And the twenty thirty-five vision plan, we've used as the backbone of what we've kind of framed on how we were gonna do this development. We made sure that we complied with the, the, the goals and principles that you guys had kind of defined and set forth, because we, it doesn't do any good to put those things in place if they're not followed. So we want to make sure we put something forward on that, that side. The existing on here, it's kind of hard to see on this map, but you know, that's kind of our blank slate. It's got some unique, with the, with the creeks and the draws in there, creates some unique opportunities to break the look. And I think part of what Columbia County has suffered from in the past is you've had large areas of mass grading when you can see nothing but rooftops with breaks and everything through there. So with the green space, we plan on breaking that up, just like we did with Whispering Pines, taking the opportunities of some fifty-foot buffers and larger buffers to use those trees to break the tree, break the rooftops. And that's gonna be continued through with this development when you, when we get done with that side. On the goals themselves, I mean, we're looking for an environmentally sensitive community, multiple price points of homes, pedestrian, pedestrian scale community, quality residential growth in Columbia County, and, you know, basically designed for living. We don't want people just to drive into the garage, just close the door, just never come out. You know, I lived in Cambridge, and one of my neighbors did that every single day. Drove straight in, closed the door, never saw him again. You know, we want to create these areas to create gathering points. And so the parks were a key component of that. The master plan we ended up with, basically, it involved a lot of meetings with various counties, various county departments, stormwater, floodplain, planning and zoning, engineering, traffic. You know, it was a very cohesive effort. I think the planning department has been especially helpful in pushing us to look at ways to make this community even more, even more unique. There are challenges and ideas that have taken, taken for our first layout in directions that we hadn't looked at before into the color master plan we see. And even beyond with some recent ideas, Danielle had some ideas to take some areas, I can't, can I circle on this? Okay. This one right here, they had suggested taking this area right here and flipping the road to the back and having the homes front directly on the park, which we think is a great idea. Unfortunately, in the couple weeks that, when that came up, we haven't had a chance to kind of massage that, massage that. But it's a future section. I think it's, you know, it would be an understatement to say thank you for all the time and effort that staff's put in this, to help us reach this point. I think they, like I said, they've really pushed us to kind of take, you know, push the envelope on this. And I think that's the whole goal with the PRD, is not to have something of the norm. That's to have something a little bit different. You know, we don't always see eye to eye, but that's okay. I think disagreement brings fruitful thought and make sure you look at things in different ways. So I think I appreciate their time and effort on that. The plan does incorporate the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer. That's our intent. That was actually, that was the number one thing when we first, when I laid out this property. We carved off the fifty-foot buffer and never considered going back in it. We want to make sure something that is going to work against, obviously, what is largely a rural area. Obviously, it's intended to be more than a rural area in the future, but right now, it needs to be cohesive, it needs to minimize the impact on surrounding landowners. And so we, the fifty-foot buffer is definitely not going to be impacted at all. That's not our intent and that's what we put in the, in the narrative. The site plan obviously does incorporate four residential, single-family zoning districts. Danielle mentioned the structured drainage. That's something we implemented at Whispering Pines, which is basically a private storm sewer that the yard drains from the lots can tie into. That's a problem I deal with on a weekly basis. When things don't get built right, don't get graded right. I know Matt and his group over there have worked hard to avoid that, but sometimes lots are just very difficult to get the water off. And so by putting a structured drainage, we, we give them a definite way for them to solve the drainage. There's no if and buts about it. They can fix it. So it's three feet deep, so it's plenty deep to get all the way around the house and solve that. So that takes care of it. It was, stormwater's main concern with the side setbacks was being able to handle the drainage. When we had five-foot side setbacks, they couldn't adequately get a swale in that, in that space. So we've made, we were doing seven and a half, but that structured drainage will solve that. It's on the uphill side of the road on that. Danielle men, mentioned thirty-eight percent open space. We're pretty proud of that. It's eighty-eight acres. You know, it's a combination of parks, buffers, natural areas, protection zones for environmentally sensitive areas. You can kind of, it's hard to tell on this map, but you know, it's, it's, the goal with it was, we still have our density, but rather than just, you know, our, our, our experience has been is if we leave that, if we leave that area on the lots, the builders are gonna clear those trees. We take it outside the lots, put it in, in a preserved area, we can maintain those trees. You can drive through Whispering Pines and look at some of those buffer areas that we were able to save in those, in that neighborhood.
Mr. Lawrence, on, on the plan that, that you shared with me earlier today, the lots on the upper right-hand corner go away and that converts to a cul-de-sac before you cross the creek?
Yep. It's coming up next. I was gonna get to that. The, one second. The amenity areas Danielle mentioned, seven park, I mean, we've got the parks in there, seven minutes, sidewalks on both sides, mid-block crosswalks are gonna be used in areas to connect residents, streetlights installed after final plating, community area, it's about a twenty-acre area we've got set aside for that in there. And then the revised plan was the big one right here, which you were mentioning. Danielle was talking about, we have, this is the area right here where the modifications have come. And we, we've, this is our proposed route right now. We understand the condition and we can't, we basically are not proposing, you know, once we get past the three hundred, or at that three hundred threshold, it's going to have to have the second entrance. This is one that we've identified. It actually, the gentleman that owns it works for, Prather Construction, is in friendly hands, so to speak. So I couldn't, Otz is another piece of property that was up in this area, which was another area, but unfortunately, we can't, we can't guarantee that one right there. Niels was one we can get. We understand that if we can't get the second entrance, that we would be limited on the number of lots that would be in that, in that case. The, and we would have, I think this has been a concern of the commissioners, planning commission staff in general. Unfortunately, it's not something that's currently in the ordinance. And I said, so, we apologize for not having it addressed prior to this, but I think, I think if it's, if it's, if it's modified in there, which I do recommend we do, this would, we would have, we would have had our second entrance in upfront, but we will definitely do it. We understand that. So that's, that's the reason the color master plan unfortunately didn't get revised in time. But the intent will be, and will be to have that second entrance on that side. Couple last quick things. The cross-section, we've been working with Patty Laster and Steve Exley on this and they've had some and they've had some concerns on the additional utilities, that they want to make sure that they have additional utility providers, space for fiber companies and everything. So this utility corridor was increased from nine and a half to thirteen and a half, which adds three more spaces in there for future utility providers. So just want to make sure you guys know that we're working with them on that side. And this also shows the location of the private storm sewer on that side at the bottom of that page right there. So, you know, we hope that the planning commission, the residents of Columbia County will see that we're committed to providing quality residential communities that will continue the Mavon tradition of setting the bar high as Riverwood, Rhodes Farm, Canterbury Farms, Pine Bluff and Whispering Pines have done. Questions?
Go back to the apps.
One you want to go to?
This, the, the, the potential outlet over there on the far left, it's got the little arrow going up. You'd, yeah, right there. You'd made a comment that weren't sure if you could get that land. That is not Prather land right there?
No, no, sir. And that's not uncommon. A lot of times, staff will want you to try to make a connection to a large piece of property in hopes that if it ever were to develop, that there would be a potential interconnectivity on that side.
You're just playing ahead, it's.
Yes, sir. Make sure it's in a logical spot and everything.
Okay.
Mr. Lawrence, I think we have some recent experience with single entry shared with the school over at Greenbrier High School. I don't know anybody who enjoyed that. What do you see going forward for that?
As far as the, as far as this one?
Approaching that problem.
Ah, you know, I, I think that it's, it's a matter of how it's handled internally. This one's a little bit different. You know, that they, their internal circulation is still inside this bubble right here. They're accessed off that parkway. Their driveway comes into that site. You know, that's, that's something that initially depends, it's, it's the number of lots that you're going to have in there. And I, you know, this, this second entrance that we're talking about right here will more than likely come in sooner than three hundred lots. You know, obviously, people being able to get in and out of the residence, in and out of our neighborhood is a key. If they can't get in and out, they're not going to buy homes. So, you know, that's the one reason why we actually installed General Woods Parkway for Riverwood. That was a, that was a developer parkway on that side.
The, the, there's a school off of Con Road looking.
Supper Landing.
I, I have, I have some friends that live in that area and they say that the afternoon pickup line, pretty, pretty on that area. So have you seen the la- have you seen the school layout and where, where is the entrance? Where are they planning on parking all these?
I have, I can't, couldn't recite it where it was.
Every kid in middle school rides, rides in a car nowadays. Nobody rides a bus anymore.
Yeah.
So are there any contingency or communication with, heard about, about that?
I had some discussion with some folks this morning and, you know, that's one of the things we actually talked about, was trying to see if there was a way to engage Steve Castle to make sure that the circulation patterns are, are kind of work with everybody together. So I don't have an answer on that, but I do think that that's something that we're going to try to see if we can push forward and see if there is a way to engage Steve. Generally speaking, the Board of Education is kind of, works as its sole entity. They don't really work well, they don't play well with others in the sand. We've tried in the past to do different things. Generally speaking, they kind of do what they want to do. But we'll, hopefully, we might be able to make some headway on that.
It was, when we went and looked at it, it's a lot of space behind, behind the school. There may be, maybe for athletics or what have you.
Yeah, but I mean, it's also, you also have the option if there was need to, they, they could do some additional widening on this road. We could do some additional widening on the road if we need to. If for some reason it looks like they're teeing, queuing up on that road, it may be that there needs to be an additional lane that so that they can take a left and queue up in there and still maintain the through traffic.
The, the one thing that's been discussed with some additional mid-block breaks, would you be open to discussion with staff to, to add those so there's a little more connectivity for foot traffic through the neighborhood?
I think we are. I think we'd like to sit down with staff and define kind of the block lengths. What's, what's the block length that really, really defines what's the need for it? You know, is there, you know, is it, is it an eight-hundred-foot block, six-hundred-foot block, five-hundred-foot block? I think just to define that coming through there, we're open to it. I mean, you know, one idea I've heard is basically, I mean, maybe there's a possibility to adjust some side setbacks on those ones just adjacent to the mid, to the mid-block crosswalks to allow it, just to squeeze a little extra space without losing a lot. Besides that, I think we're definitely open to it. We're working with them. Traffic calming was another one that was, that was an issue. I think that, you know, we, we want to try to come up with some unique ideas on trying to come up with one. I've seen some. I just haven't seen them used here. So that's really what I want to try to see. And, you know, I've talked with Steve Castle about a couple of them. Some of them, he's just concerned a little bit on the practicality of the repaving of the roads, how well it's going to work after the fact. So I think that we just really want to try, we were open to come up with some great ideas. I've talked with Steve Exley a good bit about that. Only concern I have with the little of them is, is they look great, but they're all irrigated and planted, the ones I've seen. So it's, it's going to just be a little bit of a challenge because typically you want all irrigation heads are five feet outside the right of way. So just trying to come up with that.
Now, when, when you, when you cross the street with, with the, the mid, mid-block alleyways there, do you have raised crosswalks or are they flat crosswalks or what?
You, if, if they're logical, logical locations, you could do like a mid-block crosswalk that's a raised crosswalk. I think the staff is open to the raised mid-block crosswalks or raised crosswalks where they actually line up with a mid-block crosswalk type situation, not just randomly set in there. And that, that actually could be a design feature such as right there as well, to break up the lengths.
All right, any questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Please, gentlemen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Eric Schumacher, seven fifty, Avery Circle in Evans. I'd like to comment on this one. I've got two issues with this. I'll start, I'll back up. It looks they've done a lot of work on this. I like, I've been through Whispering Pines, the way they've done the parks, and they've got a very large park there. They have broken up the sections with the undisturbed buffers. My concerns are twofold. One, actually, okay, is, is one of the setbacks. When I go through on the county website, looking at R one, R two, I look at R two, for instance. Even when you look at R three, R two, which is, it's listed as high density. Minimum lot size is seven hundred fifty, seventy-five hundred square feet. That's the minimum. That's the largest lot that you have in this, in this subdivision. Setback, front setback, fifty feet. Again, this is what, I see is high density. And we're talking about twenty feet of front setback. Side setback, the standards, you know, for R two, high den, high density lists ten feet. You're going with seven and a half. The, I think that when the Vision twenty thirty-five, all the meetings were held, I went to several of them. The feeling I got from talking to people and listening to the comments and feedback was that people with regard to residential developments, they didn't want clear cutting. I know that, I've been through Whispering Pines, I ride through on my bike many times a month, and that's what's happened in there. With the exception of the areas where the buffers are at. I don't think that having lots of these sizes, which we're talking about one-eighth, one-ninth of an acre, I don't think that's what people envisioned when they gave feedback for the Vision twenty thirty-five. When you look at the Vision twenty thirty-five, the document on the, on the county's website, it talks about one to four dwellings per acre. I realize that when you look at this, when you take the entire development and you divide it by the number of lots, you're about two and a half. I think people anticipate one to four, meaning a one-acre lot size to a point two-five acre lot size. Not one-eighth of an acre, not one-ninth of an acre. I, I just, I think that's a little bit of, you know, a bit of misunderstanding. Also, when I look in there and look under the PUD requirements, PRD, excuse me, again, it has ten-foot setbacks. But, you know, I see the fact sheet. I'm not seeing all the details that you've got and all the PUD requirements, PRD, excuse me. And I don't think most folks are going to look and pull that up, much less delve into the details. So they see that and they think, okay, that's what we're going to have. That's the, that's the requirement. Not, well, we can shrink it down to five feet or seven and a half feet. But I think if more people realize that, they would not be in approval of what you've got for the side setbacks. As far as the front setbacks, twenty feet, I live in a neighborhood, we've got further setbacks than that. And we've got folks who have to cram cars in their driveways because they've got four vehicles. I think you're going to have some on the street parking issues. Whispering Pines is not that developed yet. So you, those issues, if they've got the similar setbacks there, they haven't manifested themselves yet. But I suspect that they will later on, when you got vehicles, that people have four cars and they have to be on the street, and then you're going to have traffic issues. The other concern I have is traffic. It's an issue that's not addressed in the report from the planning, from the planning department. And it's not at this neighborhood, it's at the interchange up at I twenty. And I've, I have a friend of mine, he has a fifth wheel, he comes in from Atlanta, and it scares him every time he gets off there because the visibility is horrid. I mean, I'm assuming that many people in this room have taken that exit. I take it every time I come back from Atlanta. I stop, I look, actually, I prefer to do it at night because at night I can see the lights of the cars coming over the bridge from the north side. But in the daytime, when I get a chance, I look and I go because you don't have a field of view for a safe entrance onto two twenty-one. With this development and with the other developments that we're talking about in that area, that's going to be an issue. And I have two requests. One is require the ten-foot side setbacks and increase the front setbacks in, you know, matching the standards. And two, planning commission to talk with traffic engineering and raise that issue because as soon as you develop this, you can have more traffic, you will have more accidents. And I think the accident rate will increase faster than the amount of traffic simply because of the poor design of that intersection. That, that's my request.
Thanks, sir. Noted. Mr. Lawrence?
Front setbacks do match. The ordinance is actually fifty feet from the center line of the road, so it's actually the same twenty-five foot. Our twenty-five foot is measured from the right of way, the ordinance is measured from the center line of the road. It's the same exact distance as R two. Just wanted to clarify that issue.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? I'll close it and accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ one seven zero four zero five, rezoning from RA to PRD for the property located at twelve forty-four, Apppling Harlem Road. Want to add in one more. Subject to the occasion about the crosswalks, about the crossblocks. Just, just in, lots where the crossblocks are available, side setbacks next to the crossblocks.
Okay, so on the mid-block, mid-block crosswalks, you want to reduce the side setbacks to five feet on all lots adjacent?
Those lots that are.
Okay.
Directly adjacent to those.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
How many in discussion? All in favor? Prove carries three to one. Right. If we could, could we take a, a two-minute bathroom break and come back and reconvene? Anybody object to that? I hope not. Thanks. We'll take just a second.
First picked a time, remember?
Hold on, yeah.
He was betting we'd be here tomorrow.
I'm done.
Until tomorrow.
I don't know, do you?
There is. Everybody's going.
Pardon?
It can show that you obviously.
Cut through that door and turn right.
We lost our audience. Lost our audience after the first item.
Huh?
Lost our audience after the first item.
Got a really good job.
That defines some interest.
It was only like two pages of notes.
I mean, we spent another hour.
She got lost. I also got a message like.
What, what was it that caught your eye about?
Did I say dub?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's residential, in the plan. Last time we go, oh.
Steve?
Guys are tough tonight. When I went home last night?
Four hearings.
Four car accidents. Every other week? Over in the.
They were going to, they were going to do it anyway.
I was trying to bring it back.
My conscience, I couldn't vote.
Yes.
That was what I made. But that hit, you know, I told, I'll pray, I think. Do a roundabout. Take that road, one of the roads in the round, run it in the two, right? Perfect. But maybe somewhere down the road, they can look at that. That doesn't cost you money. It is, it is. You know. Yeah, yeah.
Sound a little bit.
Change hand. Was your, your, no, a traffic issue out there? Yeah, he's got to get the. Oh, yeah.
And the developer.
Must be paying attention to you.
We took, we took, because I was on the transportation committee, we took money from Old Wells and give it to that.
Fight him with.
That's why I feel Wells is still. I remember that.
All right.
Yeah, that was, and then, and then the traffic.
Yeah, it's.
Hey, pick that.
I don't think everything's there.
All right, please. Liz, whenever you're ready, we'll reconvene. All right, if we could find our seats, we'll get started. All right, I'd like to gavel us back in at seven fifty-two. Mr. Butler filed RZ one seven zero four zero six.
Mr. Chair, this is a request for a rezone from C two to C two. What were the conditional use for a tattoo parlor at forty-three eighty-seven Ridge Trail? It is located in the, let's see, southwest corner of the intersection Ridge Trail and Beverly, Beverly Road, just off I twenty. And currently zone C two, everything around it is zone C two, except for to the east, you have a property that's zone PUD for the ridge crossing development. Area view of the site, again, it's your basic C two strip center. And it's root view of the site. And also showing the plat, and this is a fairly old plat. There's a future land use. This is within the Interstate Activities Center, so the C two use is acceptable. In terms of the tattoo parlor itself, the applicant provided quite a, quite a, quite a bit of information. They currently have a, a, a current shop in Columbia County Allegiance Inc. They've been operating since, I believe, twenty thirteen. And generally, staff doesn't have any issues with the, with the request. Within, within the application, there was a mention of some concerns. That was probably an overstatement. They do have to comply with our tattooing ordinance, which actually the applicant helped write, which they're very familiar with. And then also, there's no business licenses for this, for this current, for the, for the building itself. So if they cannot show that it's been occupied, they will have to bring the site into compliance. The applicant has been notified of that. Again, staff does recommend approval of the request. I conclude style of recommendation.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen, have any questions, staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Give us your name and home address, please, sir.
Philip Jacobs, eleven fifty-three Greenwich Pass. Yeah, so we've done this before. We did it when we were looking at P one, and that didn't go over, what, three years ago?
We did it when we were looking at P-one, and that didn't go over, what, three years ago? Before any of this was around, the conditional uses. So we found a C-two. And, you know, as far as what the, the concerns, I've talked it over with Will. We work real closely with the health department, all those ladies out there, and, and, you know, everything from, they've had Richmond County come and do their inspections at my shop here in Columbia County to learn how to inspect in Richmond County, because Richmond County was falling behind. That, that part of it's not a concern. I have two, the, the concern with it not being occupied, I have two commercial leases with me of people that are currently in that building, so I don't know where their business licenses are, but I have their leases. So, you know, that's, that's one of those things. I'm looking at buying the building, whether I gotta bring it up, it's not gonna look like that when I get done with it, you know? I, I, that area, I know what I'm dealing with in that area. And it's, it's funny, where I'm at now, we always joke with Corbin, who owns Home Remodelers Warehouse. Like he said, I would rather have you guys every day of the week right beside me than Goodwill. So, you know, he said Goodwill's the problem over there, so. I'm just looking at expanding the, the business. I'm staying in the building that George owns for as long as he lets me until he gets a wild hair and kicks me out or whatever he does, so you never know with George, so.
Now, are you looking to, I remember when you, you were looking at the P-one?
We were gonna make
Out of a private studio, is that, is that the, the direction you're gonna go here?
Well, my plan with this one is, is because it's C-two, I'll have more of a, it's not gonna be, the one on Washington Road is to a point where we have people coming in and out all day long. You know, it's pretty busy. This one, I'll take my guys that are booked out. They have clients that have, are months out in advance, two, three months of clients waiting on them. So I'll move a lot of those guys over there. The aver, I won't do the advertising that I do for this one, but it's not gonna be a private studio either. I'm not gonna, if I'm, if I'm looking into C-two with the P-one, I was gonna go that route. With the C-two, with it being in a commercial property, there's no reason to keep it just that private studio, but I, there won't be the advertising that this one has, if I'm making sense there. I won't push it as far, it, to me, it's, um, it's a backup plan, you know, like, if George decides he doesn't want us there next year, I gotta look at seven guys and be like, by the way, we don't have anywhere to go.
Is Dr. George?
Yes.
As long as your check clears, he's gonna let you stay there, I have a feeling.
You know, I, I said that
Knowing him like I do.
I said that, and then we, we looked at expanding, and Corbin was okay with it. And so we looked at expanding, and George didn't want me to expand, so. It, it, and coming from Corbin, there was some discussion of, well, I don't like those guys, and that's when the, the whole conversation came up with, leave those guys alone, worry about Goodwill, so. But this is the answer to that, is expansion into that area. Plus, honestly, that area is closer to Fort Gordon, a lot of our business is military. Also, we close on Sunday and Monday, though.
All right, gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Is it a public hearing? Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Thinking none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion. Mr. Chair, I move to approve file RZ one seven zero four zero six, conditional use at two at forty-three eighty-seven Ridge Trail. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. All right, Ms. Bulte, file RZ one seven zero four zero seven.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a conditional use for multifamily residents at forty twenty-two Washington Road. This is a request for a single existing apartment on the site. The property is located between Washington Road and Columbia Road, adjacent to Kroger, flowing Wells Road to the east, and is currently zoned C-two general commercial. Here's an aerial of the site, this is the existing auto mall of Georgia, as you can see here. The certificate of occupancy for this building was granted as a mixed-use building, so the apartment in there is approved for use. This property is located within the Martinez Activity Center, which is one of our mixed-use centers. The intent of a mixed-use center like this is to have a mix of residential, commercial, professional uses, and kind of create a walkable area. This is a somewhat unusual example of a, a mixed-use, but it is in keeping with the intent of the Activity Center, and staff is recommending approval.
So is a public hearing, is the applicant here this evening? I didn't think I saw Andy come in. Okay, is there anyone who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Thinking none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve file RZ one seven zero four zero seven for conditional use.
Do you hear a second?
Second, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Let's see, uh, who we got? Mr. Butler file RZ one seven zero four zero eight.
Mr. Chair, this is a request for a rezone of several parcels, Columbia Road as well as Laurel Land Extension, from P-one Professional and R-two Civil Home Residential to S-one Special for Senior Housing Development. Property is on north side of Columbia Road, and does, does, or is adjacent to the Glenora subdivision. Being currently zoned R-two and P-one, the north is R-two. To the south is two S-one developments, one of them being Wimberly, other being Church. Then to the west, you have a townhouse residential development. To the east, you have C-one. Again, current, uh, current aerial of the site, again, it is currently vacant. And it's root view of the site. And then the, the plat that shows all the different parcels together. And again, with this being S-one, we do have a concept plan, so what the applicant is, is showing is a senior housing development. This is the actual building here. It is a three-story, essentially apartment complex. But it is limited to fifty-five and older by both the narrative as well as deed restrictions. In terms of the site itself, they do have a thirty-foot buffer, or structural buffer against the townhouse residential on this side, twenty-foot against the commercial. And at the rear, they have a thirty-foot buffer against the Laurel Land Extension property. Then also fenced extension, gazebo, garden, dumpster. And lastly, a walking trail that goes up to the lake around, or to the lake on the north, north side of the property. They are not proposing any access into Glenora at this time, and that's not something that's part of this application. And also, they have existing trees to remain on the, the concept plan. In terms of the elevations, they have submitted conceptuals. Again, this is, this is within the Bel Air No Protection Overlay District, so it does have architectural requirements. So we will be looking at these further during, again, if it gets approved, that sort of thing, during building permitting. Again, it shows a three-story building, again, looking very much like an apartment complex, but again, being limited to fifty-five and older. There's a future land use is, is, is within the Bel Air Activity Center, which is also a mixed-use area. Again, does have some townhouses within it, and also commercial development as well. It is fitting for that area. Staff does recommend approval with the condition that the rear buffer against one twelve Laurel Land Extension will be undisturbed to twenty feet adjacent to the property line, remaining ten feet can be disturbed. And again, this, any disturbed area will be replanted with evergreens, forming opaque screen. And there's a pretty sterile line that has to go across that, and that can, can cross the buffer. Again, the reason for this condition is to protect that adjacent residential property from the developments there. Includes staff recommendation.
So there's no, no request for, to, to connect to Glenora?
Not from their concept or from their narrative.
Is there a plan for any kind of an emergency entry from that side of the property?
No, there's not, not at this time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Come forward and give us your name and home address.
Thank you. My name is Shane Doran, and I'm at thirty-four Frogmore Road in Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. Pleased to be here in front of you this evening with Humanities Foundation. I have some PowerPoint stuff here, I'd like to just maybe go to the, the next slide, hit some high points about us. Thank you. We have twenty-five years of experience in affordable housing development and management. We've been around since nineteen ninety-two. In that time, we've done more than two thousand units of affordable housing across four states. We're in Georgia, Louisiana, Virginia, and South Carolina where we're based. We have twenty-seven developments, either awarded, completed, or in construction. Yes, and we're one of the top fifty affordable housing developers in the country. We just want to build some quality housing for seniors here, we think it's a great place for it. We also do extensive resident services. These include food pantries, transportation. We can get into these a little more if y'all are curious, but in the interest of time, I thought I'd just kind of keep rolling. One other thing we do is, we try to keep our seniors in their homes as long as we possibly can. This is an independent living facility, but we do work with various providers to keep people in their homes, and to self-manage chronic conditions with independents. We partner with local nursing students to conduct health clinics. We're doing this in Richmond Hill, Georgia right now, and we would do the same thing here. We provide a community garden in here. As you can see, that, that one slide, we have, we often work with neighborhood groups to get volunteers. In this case, this was a church group that came out and actually cleaned up the garden and did some planning for our residents. And I have my president here that, this evening, if, if any questions more about this type of thing, she's much better at talking about it than I am. Will's covered the location and the elevations, et cetera. So really, the rest of this is property-specific, and he's kind of covered it. Though I would say, you know, that's all I really have to say unless there are some questions.
By affordable, do you mean hut housing?
No, this is not such an aid, but it, it is financed through tax credits, so there is, it is income restricted, rent restricted.
Mentioned it's a deed restriction fifty-five and over?
Yes, sir.
How, how is that enforced? Who enforces that?
We are required by DCA to record the exact language that is in the narrative here in the, in the case before you.
Yeah, so I've got someone, a fifty-five-year-old grandmother, that wants to keep her kids, keep her grandchildren. How does that work?
We don't allow anyone who's not a leaseholder to live in the facility. It's a secure facility, you have either a FOB or swipe, has elevators, it's heated. No one comes and goes without us knowing it, no one parks their car without a parking pass. You need a, you need a lease to have a parking pass. Kids are not allowed to stay there. There is a process, if they become a certified caregiver, they can stay if they're taking care of their, of their, of someone over fifty-five. If someone marries someone under fifty-five, we can't help that, the spouse gets to stay there, that's, that's the rule. But these rules, I, I took the exact language that we need, that we have to do for DCA to record on the deed. It is in here, so it's, it's enforced by DCA and it's enforced, you know, by the deed itself.
Is there a clause that allows a certain person in the facility?
Will, you don't have that particular part of it, it's in the, the exact language is in the body of the recommendation somewhere.
Sure, and it's also, yeah, it's in, it's in the recommendation. I mean, I can read it to you. The development will be accessible, adaptable, and intended for and operated for occupancy by persons fifty-five years of age or older. Eighty percent of total housing units must be occupied by at least one person who's fifty-five years or older. Twenty percent of the units may be occupied by others, including landlords, employees, surviving spouses, or children of residence who were fifty-five years of age or older when they died, and caregivers. Owner must adhere to policies and procedures that demonstrate intent of owner and manager to provide housing to persons fifty-five years of age or older. And again, that's taken directly from their narrative, and, and also in our recommendation.
The, the, the most notable was, you know, if the, let's say the person younger than fifty-five, if their spouse dies, we don't kick them out. But the general intention is to serve people fifty-five.
Caregiver living with a five-year-old older and they die, did I hear that?
He'd have to read it again and see if there's a comma there.
I think the, I think the issue that folks are tiptoeing around here is, is, is folks to, to a big degree move to Columbia County for the schools, what's gonna prevent somebody from moving in this facility and bringing their kids with them just so they can go to Columbia County schools? That's, that's what I think we're trying to get at.
We enforce it ourselves, and we, we, I can tell you that DCA inspects our files at least once a year. They audit us. It's not a matter of if they audit you, they come check your files every year. So we run a tight ship, and so does DCA. I'm almost unable to answer the question because it just simply doesn't occur.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's, it's fifty-five or over, that's who we're there for. Someone sits down to apply, they're not fifty-five or over, their spouse isn't fifty-five or over, it's a very short conversation, and they have to leave.
Are these month-to-month, six-month, year-long, do they purchase the unit?
Year-long.
Year-long, okay.
Go back to the textual here. Oh, sorry. There we go. Yeah, there you go. So, um, what what flexibility have with creating an access behind the building for emergency vehicles?
We have no desire to create an entrance back there. We would prefer to leave vegetation in place as much as possible. Have a walking trail that a resident can enjoy and leave it natural. I believe FIRE at least had an initial look at this case, and they didn't express a need to it yet. If, if FIRE expressed a need for it, I guess we'd have to deal with that at that time, but thus far, they have not told us we need a second entrance. You don't have any desire for one.
If, if I could, I can kind of clarify that for FIRE. What he was talking about in his comment is around the building itself, not anything to do with access at other points.
That's what I, that's what I meant.
He wanted it clear enough so he could get equipment.
Yes.
Completely around the building, but not necessarily paved access.
Exactly, and that's something that, you know, we've made them aware of and has come up before with developments like this, and it usually gets handled at site plan, to be honest with you. But again, it's one of those words to let them know now, so they can go ahead and anticipate having to do that on the first and middle if they get a break.
And I would assume you, you know why we're sensitive to, to, to that in particular, because of what happened across
I very much do, we, we, we do, yes. And we, Will, we chose not to, I ran the requirement by my architect, we're fine with it, we just chose not to change the plan. We, we plan on creating access around it, and I believe the other comment was, it's flat, five feet on the back.
So, so
So we'll be able to comply with the FIRE
Just so I understand that is, it doesn't have to be paved as long as cook and access it. Is that what you just said?
That, let's see. So the Fire Marshal said, Fire Department Access Road is not up here to comply with code. Applyable fire code requirements apply, including the following. Access road is required to be within a hundred fifty feet of all portions of the building. At least fifteen feet of level grade is required around the building's perimeter for ladder rescue. Access road is required to accommodate the aerial trucks, two hundred forty-five inch wheelbase, for maneuvering. An access road at least twenty-six feet wide is required to between fifteen feet and thirty feet from the building, be parallel to the entire long side of the building. And that's, and again, I, I cannot interpret what fire code is because I'm not the Fire Marshal. That's what his comment was.
I, I've been through this with my architect. What we plan on doing, this is already gonna comply, it's flat with the fifteen flat part, and he thinks that we can comment, we, we'll be able to accommodate the other comment with the hundred fifty feet by maybe paving as little as possible along there. With the hose lay, we think that'll comply. My architect's looked at this thoroughly and assures me that we can comply, even in this spot.
Forgive me for being insensitive, but I, I, I've got to ask this question. One of the things that bothered me about the facility next door is they described it as an active lifestyle facility. Yet you had semi-invalide, if not invalid, ninety-plus-year-old folks on the top floor. How do you, how do you dictate where somebody is based on their physical limitations, where they're located in the building?
Well, all of our units are UD accessible, and a, and a large number are handicapped, too. It's required by DCA, so ten percent of our spots are handicapped. Entire site and all the amenities have to be ADA anywhere that's public, like a spot or, or anything like that. We don't differentiate different levels of infirmity or, or wellness because it's all elevator-served, and if we start putting people in different units for reasons of their health, we would actually run a file we'd actually run afoul of their housing and I'm sure we'll be leaving. So, you know, we lease equally to all who qualify. And separating the more infirmed and the less infirmed would, I don't think we could do.
And I realize that. I just, you know, it just breaks my heart that we had folks on the third floor that couldn't take care of themselves and get out of the building and when it caught fire. And that just, I live in fear of that happening somewhere again. And probably, you know, with the inspections that are going to happen with these in the future, I'm sure these are going to be the safest buildings in the county. But again, it's our job to ask questions like this.
I understand. And, you know, we always bring our A-game when it comes to safety, but we're certainly going to bring it in this case because we're well aware of the history. And we're going to do everything humanly possible on this earth to make sure that sprinkler system's working completely as it should, that we're up on our bills and that the service is intact. We do everything we can to ensure their safety. We understand there were some problems before. I'm not sure what they were, but do everything we can to keep our seniors. I promise.
Do you have a facility here in Columbia County called Washington Commons? Are you familiar with that?
I've heard of it.
I'm just wondering, how does your facility stack up against that?
I'm not as familiar as I could be. I have some local members of my team. I don't know if they could comment on it, but I'd have to see a picture of it or know more about it. I mean, I've heard of it. I apologize.
Questions?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here to like to speak either for or against this? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Oh, I'm Alicia Colley. I live in 114 Glenora Drive. So you can see my house in the cul-de-sac. I have a few concerns. One, as you can see, there's said that there's going to be lighting that evenings would flood into my backyard and my windows. Also, I'm a little concerned about the walking trail. And there's no buffer between the walking trail where my home will sit, which also has a comment of concern for the type of residents that will be there. Is there a screening process? What type of people are going to be living there? I have a five-year-old daughter. So her security is my main. My daughters can, my daughters save. They save 55 or older, but if there's that one resident that spouse is under, below her, we don't know, you know? I need a safe environment. I bought, I moved from Richmond County to be in Columbia County for a reason. And now it looks like there's a facility that's going to be built there that could counteract my choice to move out here.
If I'm looking at the plan correctly, the six-foot opaque fence and 20-foot buffer would go all the way around the property? Is that correct, Andrew?
Actually, we go this way here.
Right, but how high do the lights go?
Probably 26, 30 feet.
Right.
But you're also, I mean.
There would probably, I would venture to guess, be photometric studies done so you don't have light that bleeds over onto neighbors. We, as a rule, ask for people to provide that so you don't have the bleed over like you're experiencing.
Now, let me clarify that, too. We do ask for that information. Would need a condition to prevent that from spilling over, just more directional lighting to prevent that light from spilling over onto adjacent properties. So if that is something you want to address, we would need additional condition.
And there is one more. I'm concerned about my property value. Will that lower because of the facility built there? That's a big issue for me. I bought this house with the auspice of my property value raising, selling my home, and moving into another home. If my property value drops, where's my investment?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it.
This is a public hearing? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Good evening. I'm Tracy Doran, and I'm the president and co-founder of Humanities Foundation. And I would like to address her question about screening and the process that we go through with our residents. Basically, we do background checks on everyone. They go through credit checks with our senior developments. There really isn't an issue. We haven't seen that. About half of our portfolio of 2,000 units are senior properties. They are wonderful communities. These seniors move in, they love living there, they're proud of their community. And if someone moves in and they start having issues with their health, they can't take care of themselves. We're not an independent, we're an independent living facility. We're not a nursing facility. So they can stay as long as they can take care of themselves. If we have problems with people, we have issues and we have provisions in our lease that we give them warnings and then they're evicted, just like they would be if they were in a regular apartment community. That sounds a little cold, but if somebody is bothering their neighbor or doing something like that, we would certainly take care of that. We have the management company. We manage. James Storm Company Management manages. It's not third-party. We are very involved. So I just want to address that we screen everybody thoroughly and we manage our tenants.
Right, thank you.
Did you have a live-in manager and assistant manager?
We do. I believe we have one. Yeah, we have, and some of our properties, resident managers, I'm not sure we're here, but it'll be somebody in this community. A lot of times, we have like a maintenance man or somebody else living in a unit there. But there will be somebody that will be available all the time.
And what is the average age? Oh, it's 55 and above. What's your average age?
Truthfully, we don't have that many in their 50s. I would say that mid-60s to mid to late 70s. And most of them are independent. And we have lots of activities, transportation, we can get them, take them to activities. And there are also property values. I would like to address that a little bit as well. If anyone is concerned about how we maintain our properties or the quality of construction, the quality of management, how we keep the grounds, our property, our other property in Georgia in Richmond Hill is a beautiful example. And I know it's a little bit of a drive, but it's worth, if you're concerned about it, going to look at it. And it is at the entrance of a fairly high-end, the houses are probably $400,000 or $500,000 homes. And we're at the entrance to this facility. And the mayor of Richmond Hill has been a great advocate for affordable housing there. And I'm sure he would be glad to speak to anybody that had concerns as well.
Is that the other golf course in Richmond Hill?
That again?
Is that the other golf course in Richmond Hill?
Would you mind just clarifying what you feel the definition of thorough screening is?
Of screening?
You mentioned several times you said thorough screening, but screening can be, you know, what someone's definition of thorough screening is, can vary. Someone can go to sheriff's office and there's the ID of a person cleared in this county and they may have a record in the following county. I have a business where we national checks, check for years. So would you describe what your definition of thorough screening is?
We do background screenings. So if someone has something like on their, if they have a criminal background record, it will show up on the screening that we do.
National check.
And then we also do credit screening. And we also check with previous landlords.
Ma'am, we don't want to interfere with anybody's relationships, but there's, I'm trying to figure out, we're trying to figure out how much wiggle room there is in the definitions. What would define a caregiver? What would define an attendant or someone else who would try to make an end run on whatever regulations you have on who the resident is going to be in the facility?
You know, this question is always asked. And, you know, a caregiver could be a caregiver who takes care of their mother or somebody like that. But I can tell you, we don't see that. And the residents that live in these communities, they aren't going to allow somebody to come in and live there that is not a true caregiver, is just a young person trying to stay with their mother. We don't allow that. So it would have to be a caregiver that is actually taking care of someone that needs it. And, you know, the truth is, it's independent living. So once that person gets to a point that they need full-time caregiving and nursing home kind of situation, we just don't see it. I don't even know if we have caregivers, truthfully, living in any of our communities. I can't think of an example. It's in the definition, but just don't see it.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
I'm Conchetta Knox. I am at 116 Glenora, no, I'm not. I'm at 116 Rona Court. So it is the Glenora thing. I am being sucked in. I don't know, can I draw on this? This is where my house is, right there. This is going to be the walking trail. This, oh, hold on, I can't draw on this, I'm sorry. This right here, right there, thanks, whoever gave me something. That right there is my, the county's storm drain. And I don't know if y'all have ever been out there in the rain, but my husband, Alicia's husband, and our surrounding cul-de-sac cleans it out during the rain. Because what happens is, is everything from the top cul-de-sac, it comes down and then it's supposed to go, I teach 4H, and so I worked with the Columbia County. And so it goes down into the storm drain, down into the ground. It's supposed to percolate, right? Well, it does not do that because there's so much debris that is taken from there and it does not go down. And my concern is, is when this walking trail, and right now, I'm sure you have surveyed it and seen, there's so much concrete and so much junk that the previous owner, Ken Thomas, I'm sure y'all know him, he used to be there, there's so much junk there on that, on the, what is supposed to be the walking trail that's supposed to remain vegetation. My main concern is you are literally coming in on top of me. I am going to, I don't know what the solution is. I have some great solutions I would like to talk to y'all about afterwards, Humanities Foundation. And I'm so, I'm like celebrity struck because I have, I have seen you, I have Googled you. Humanities Foundation is, I have, I have, I have done my research on the Humanities Foundation. I am not okay with this. The main, I think it's great with stuff that they are doing, but it's not okay with what's happening around the people that it's affecting around there. And three of them are my daughters. I have a 13-year-old girl, God bless my soul. I have an eight-year-old autistic child. And then I have a seven-year-old, no, she's eight now. I can tell you their grades. They all three play in my backyard. But I may have a walking trail in my backyard now that is, I'm going to have to get a fence or somebody's going to put me up a fence or something because I'm not going to have any room for my kids to play anymore because this is for residents. And yes, there is, yes, there is greenery. I don't know if y'all have been there, been out in, around this quote "lake." I don't know, a couple of years ago, there was dead fish floating in this lake that they had to come and clean. It is not a lake like Clark Hill Lake. It is a pond that is a little bit larger. That's what it is. It is not a place where I would let my children go fishing. It is not my, it is not a lake that my children would be able to play around. When the greenery behind our house in the winter and the fall, when it come, when it's, when all the leaves come down, it is not a pleasant sight to be. Are they going to make it green and make it, you know, glorious and everything? Maybe, but it's, right now, it's not aesthetically whatever they said earlier. My concern is mainly for my children, for them to play. I don't know how, I'm going to tell my children this beautiful walking trail, how they're going to not be able to go there. And I am a very strong mother, but I have a trampoline in my backyard. Are you saying that my children cannot go play outside? Absolutely not. If you put a walking trail and they see people, they're going, it's just more strangers coming into it. Yes, they're 55 years or older, but they might see them as a grandparent. Yes, are they background? Yes, but no is the answer.
I can ask, I need you to wrap this up for us, okay?
Wrap it up. I got it. The thing that is to be wrapped up is, the last thing I want to talk about is the existing, we have, oh, the walking trail that goes into Glenora. That is my, that's one of my biggest concerns is because, because if it is, if they do it, could they pave it? I know there is no, there is no plans right now for them to pave it, but could they pave it? Yes, they could pave it. Because if they wanted to, they could do that. Thank you.
Excuse me, pave?
Oh, yes.
Which walking trail? Their walking trail?
Their walking trail currently. Now, we, a couple, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, into the back part, which like back here, into right there, they're, they put a, that's Shady Grove right back here. And that is low-income duplexes or income-based housing is what it is right now. And what they put is they put a, what would happen was they would be walking on our, on the current existing trail. They would be jumping over and walking through these peoples in Lower Court and then walking up and then going like a, like so they didn't have to go all the way through the neighborhood. So they put a big, Mr. Thomas, the previous owner, built a big tall fence in Lower Lane in the back of, so it prevented that from coming because it would be 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. And I've had police call to my house at all hours of the night of people running through back of my backyard. I've recently, I've put a fence up now, but is that going to cause a problem? What if someone is 55 years or older and has a caregiver but has Alzheimer's and doesn't know where they go? Or has autism like my child and gets lost? I mean, what is stopping that? Any other questions?
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ 170408 rezoning of three properties located at 4517, 4521 Columbia Road and 114 Lower Lane Extension. R2 and P1 to S1 for independence. I would like to add, as one of the conditions, that directional lighting is required. Part of the, part of the plan.
Go here a second.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 4-0. Yes, sir. You had a question? Would you like to ask that now?
I was just curious, is there a county definition of directional lighting? What we typically do is we do one foot candle within the site. We'll do a photometric study. And typically, we try to keep our bleed over to less than half of a property line, which I, we do that. I can't imagine that resident here was going to have any problem at all. But you mean dark skies?
Well, I think, I think the sounds like is prevent, prevent residents, I think a half-foot candle property line is fine, but to prevent the eyes, the height of lights that you actually see up into or put some shields up so you don't actually look directly at a light.
We can work, we can work that. Thank you.
There are different ways to handle it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Butler, file VA 171401.
Mr. Chair, wait one second. This is an application for a variance in 913 Sawbuck Way, it's in Section 953. This law and structure requirements reduce side setbacks from 10 feet to 5 feet. This is a property, again, it's on Sawbuck Way in Hamilton Village Phase 1. It's off Mulliken Road. Again, currently zoned R2. So let's hold here real quick. In terms of a zoning scheme, this is kind of awkward. We'll kind of talk about that now. now. This is zone R1, this is zone R2, this is zone R2 RCO, and the back is zone R3. We went back and looked at the rezoning for this. When it was rezoned, these two R2s were viewed as being a buffer between the R1 and the R2 RCO. This has created a bit of an issue with those two properties and their also, and their neighbors, where you have, you have three different zoning categories within 300 feet on a, in a subdivision, so this is not our best moment, put it lightly. Again, this is current aerial of the property, also the street view of the property, and also the plan. And in terms of site plan, they are doing a proposed room addition, you can see it right here, that does go to the five, that does go to a five-foot setback. In terms of the request, staff is comfortable with it overall, again, due to the, the odd zoning scheme in the area. There was some discussion about runoff from, from this, from this property, the adjacent ones at the rear. You'll see on here, there's a five-foot drainage utility easement that basically runs here and then also goes across the back of this property, and it's also going to replicate on this side as well. There should be swells there, basically water goes into it, goes to the back, goes down, and then goes down to retention pond, which is further down here. In turn, also, one thing that's probably exacerbating the issue is this pool is six feet higher than the back of this, at the backyard here, so any water that goes through this property is going to get a little quicker as it goes through. However, when we went back and looked at it with stormwater, they are not over there impervious from, from our standpoint, or from stormwater, and again, in the recommendation, there is, all the numbers are there if you look at, in terms of what they have. So again, staff is recommending approval of the request. That includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? The applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, if you can come forward and give us your name and home address and any information you'd like us to have.
My name is Lynn Ramp, I live at 913 Sawbuck Way. I am the original owner of the house, I purchased it new in 2003, and so we, we have three girls, and I was lucky enough to get one on my team back in September, so we have a little boy, and we need, we need more room. So we, we looked at moving, I, man, I was outnumbered from the day I got married, so then it went, so we, we have three girls, we, and so we're looking to do an addition. We looked at moving first, but then there's the advantage that we've been paying on homes since 2003, so it's nice to think that we're close to being paid off. And when we looked at moving as an option, I could actually only afford to get a loan for about the same size house I live in, which doesn't benefit me, obviously. So we, this was back in September, we started looking at doing an addition. I actually called, first time I've ever done anything similar to this, the county, to try to find out what the setbacks were, and I was told five feet over the phone. So moving forward, I had plans drawn up by Ray Good, saved up the money once I found a builder who was going to build for me, that could get close to what I could afford. We saved up the money, we actually wrote a check to the builder, who, when he came to apply, found out that it was actually 10-foot setback and not a 5-foot setback for the permits, which is then when everybody kind of realized, people who told me 5 feet, went back and looked, and just about every house around me is 5 feet setbacks, which is why they assumed mine was, and then we realized that the zoning was a little bit different. So I would definitely love to stay in the home that I've been in since 2003, but I definitely need the room also.
Glad you stopped, because we've had any number of folks that's gone ahead and built and, and would come in and ask for forgiveness later.
I, it took me a marriage to learn that that's not, that's not really how you should do it. So I went ahead and by the, with my builder, decided that it was better to ask for the variance first, so.
Gentlemen, you have any questions?
So the, the left side is the garage and...
Correct.
Close in the garage and make a larger room there, is that what's happening?
The, so the left side of the house is the garage, and then behind the garage is a, I have a laundry closet in my kitchen, so I don't have a dedicated laundry room, and then behind that is a dining room. So the left side of the house, the new plans, starting at the back, the addition will be the entire length of the house, will be a bedroom and a bathroom, mainly, I was a real estate, well, I am a licensed real estate appraiser, I don't want to put a bedroom on the side of the house without a bathroom and have, without a bathroom and have some kind of functional obsolescence there that diminishes the value, so we're doing a bathroom. And once we decided to do the bathroom, it'd be nice to have a place to actually be able to wash clothes for six people that's not in a closet, so we decided to do a laundry room. And then I also own a business here in Columbia County, and figured if we're going to come up that far, it'd be nice to have a place to park a work vehicle that's not outside where lots of money of equipment inside of it, so decided to go ahead and do the entire side.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve VA 170401.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 4-0. We have no legal matters, have no items added under staff and commissioner comments. First thing, we do have an architectural review that we will need a motion on. Ms. Mistry.
Thank you, this is the location of 469 Lewiston Road and it's zoned C2 General Commercial, and when this was originally rezoned, there was a condition that all new buildings would have elevations approved by the planning commission, that's why you have it on your agenda, right? The zoning map showed that it was a location next to the McDonald's that's built out there, and this is an office for MedNow, the elevation's there, and they've submitted a color rendering, goes brick and some architectural panels, staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, any question? And I believe we just need a motion to approve or disapprove? Okay, gentlemen, could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the review for MedNow.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Question? Okay, all in favor? To approve?
Just to clarify, you guys did have the option to table it.
Okay.
Not either approve or dis, you could table it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Alright, so do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Appreciate everybody hanging in, it was kind of a long meeting tonight, but we did get some items put to bed that needed to be put to bed. We don't have much public left, any public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will accept a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0, 8:42 PM. Next meeting is May 4th, unbelievably, 2017, 6:00 PM in these chambers.
Yeah, 8:00.
I'm enjoying it, but...
Line by.
Hey.
Good to see you.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you.
This is Laura.